Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
I like to call this meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Hingham to order. It is March 6, 2025. Time is 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, I will note for the record that participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we begin, I want to make a couple announcements. First, if you are here for the pickleball discussion, that will not be happening till about 8:15 or 8:20. The advisory committee liaison for that will not be available to then. I want to make sure that he has a chance to observe. So you're free to stay, but again, that portion of the meeting will not begin until somewhere around 8:15, 8:20. Second, I'd like to announce that concessions are going to be sold outside for anyone who needs food. And third, I do have something more serious that I'd like to discuss before we begin our regular agenda. This morning, at the Hingham High School, a swastika was discovered in the boys' men's room. Dr. John Buckley, who's the high school interim principal, issued a statement that includes the following important words that I'd like to read. "It should go without saying that anti-Semitic symbols have no place in our school. Such expressions of prejudice are completely unacceptable and totally at odds with our values as a community. We are both saddened and outraged that a student would deface a bathroom wall in this manner." This afternoon, the Hingham Hall Religious Leaders Association issued their own statement that I'd like to read. "In response to the recent discovery of an anti-Semitic symbol of hate in a boys' restroom at the Hingham High School, the Hingham Hall Religious Leaders Association condemns this act of hate and stands united against prejudice and in support of the Jewish community. Acts of hatred diminish the sanctity of the individual as well as the community, both of which we tirelessly endeavor to elevate. We call on all members of our community to speak out against this and all acts of hate and remain united as we continue working together to build a stronger and more supportive community." I would like to add my own words of outrage and sadness that we are experiencing a surge of anti-Semitic activity here in our home state of Massachusetts. Today's incident, incident of a swastika at the Hingham High School, follows yesterday's incident in the town of Wayland, just west of Boston, where a swastika had been painted on the Wayland Community Pool located in the Wayland High School. And the Wayland incident follows last month's occurrence in the town of Uxbridge, located in the center part of Massachusetts, where a swastika was found painted in the Uxbridge High School bathroom. And that incident was a month, was preceded in January, where a student at the Westfield Middle School found a swastika drawn inside their notebook. And the list goes on. Our towns and our schools need to be vigilant. We cannot be complacent. We cannot assume that anti-Semitic, any semitism exists somewhere else, but not here, because it is happening here. And it is up to us as community leaders to make sure that we all support each other and that we refuse to tolerate acts of hate. And with that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. I do not think that we have minutes for review today, so then we can go to the next item on our agenda, which is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholics beverage license to the Hingham Public Library for a Library Links Mini Golf fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Public Library on Friday, April 4, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Is David here? David, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. As you know, the town provides more than 80% of the funding of the Hingham Public Library, well over 80%, primarily focused on capital outlay, payroll, and building operations and maintenance. The bulk of the funding for the core mission of the library, however, is, that is to say, maintenance and enhancement of collections, programs, classes, and all the wonderful things that the library does for people. Most of the funds for that, the majority of the funds for that, are raised by the Board of Trustees. We do that through several means. One is gifts and bequests over the transom, the unsolicited gifts, which we receive generously from people from time to time, interests on the modest endowment that the Board of Trustees has, that the library has, which we use for library programs. The annual appeal, all of you get a letter every year, every year in November, asking for whatever small contribution or large contribution you may make to the maintenance and furtherance of the library's mission. But then in addition to that, we have, we do have to, from time to time, I shouldn't say have to, we enjoy doing it, have fundraising events. We have had the Beyond the Books event the last couple of years, which has been very successful. This year, as the Chair mentioned, we're going to have this event called Library Links, which is going to be 18-hole mini golf, nine holes downstairs and nine holes upstairs in the library on a Friday night, ticketed event. And also, we will have, there are going to be, and we already have them, sponsors for each of the 19 holes for this event. It will, there'll be music, and there'll be orders, and there will be refreshments, libations, for which we need this permit. We have already, the event has been approved by Chief Jones. He's indicated the need for a police detail. We were aware of that. We've applied for that. The application has been received, and the hope, the hope is that there will be an officer who will volunteer for that, for that duty on that evening, although we don't expect there'll be a rowdy crowd. Library lovers tend to be very nice people, and they contain their fighting instincts within reasonable bounds at all times, even though we don't have shh signs on the tables anymore. But the other thing I should mention is that while this is a ticketed event on that Friday night, April 4, the next day, all of the, all of the holes and all of the, all of the, all of the portions, however you call it, of a mini golf event will remain in place, and the townspeople are invited to come for free and play. So if you were planning to come to the library on the 5th and do some serious study or research, you might want to consider another day, since the place will be crawling with people, chasing balls, rolling out of, rolling out of sight. So that's the purpose of this, of this application, and we're hopeful that the Board will approve it.
So what's your handicap in this?
I know play golf. My brother has been trying to get me to play golf for 50 years, and I always say, Peter, I've got enough things I'm not good at. So I don't know what my handicap is, but it's serious, whatever it is.
Could you comment on the expected attendance? I note that the application says 225. Is that, is that based on past experience? What does that base?
That is really the limit, I would say, essentially. We hope to get participation up to that extent. The tickets that went on sale just this week, and I can't tell you exactly how well it's going, usually goes quite well, it may not be as many as that. It certainly won't be any more than that. But that's our target.
And how will parking be handled if, in fact, you have that large of a crowd?
Well, we have, I believe, 94 spaces at the library. We had a, I should say, a sort of a sellout event last year with, with the Beyond the Books event. There seemed to be no problem with parking. In fact, it turned out there was no volunteer police officer that night. That also was not a problem. So I guess enough people come, more than one per car, that it has not been a problem so far. We don't anticipate that it will be.
And next year, you'll be doing a pickleball event? Is that what I am?
What a great idea. I hadn't thought of that.
At the library on the second floor?
Yeah, second floor, pickleball courts. Well, you know, we might have to do that in the courtyard, I would think. In any event, it's going to be a wonderful evening, and the response in terms of sponsorships has been astounding, a sponsor for each of the 18 holes. And we have a great committee of trustees who are running this, planning it, including Michelle Pereniti, who was here with me tonight. And I know Sheri Lynn Callan is, I think, online. A great committee has been working on this, able, gifted committee with some volunteers. Of course, we're all volunteers. But I think altogether, we've, it's come together beautifully, and we anticipate it'll be really a wonderful evening, and it will benefit the community, because the library is the real community center, and it's really one of the jewels in the crown of the, I believe, 29-town Old Colony Library Network. And much of it comes from this kind of generous funding from townspeople.
Yeah, I mean, the library is a valued resource of the town, and we appreciate your efforts and the efforts of the trustees and the volunteers in arranging for this. Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I reviewed the application. I see that Chief Jones reviewed it as well, so it sounds like a great creative idea. Good luck.
Bill?
I know that the Beyond the Books fundraisers were very successful, and I know that the trustees are making a lot of efforts to raise money to help with our ever-tightening budget. So appreciate you doing this, appreciate all contributions that the trustees are making, and I'm fully supportive of it. Thank you.
Great. Are there any members of the public, comments or questions?
I think it's great.
That's great.
Have people speak at the microphone.
Right, so when we do ask for public comment, you'll need to go to the microphone and give your, your name and address, but I don't think these were comments that we need to publicly record. Is it clear how folks get their tickets? Have you explained that?
It is clear. You can get them on the library website, or you can get them at the library, and there won't actually be a paper ticket. It's more reservation, really. But you can do it either online, in fact, it's the, if you go to the library website, hingamlibrary.org, it's the main thing on the homepage, and I think the way to do it, the way is to get the tickets are clear.
Okay, great. So with that, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Hingham Public Library for Library Links Mini Golf fundraiser to be held at Hingham Public Library on Friday, April 4, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. You are approved. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is to consider Amendment Number 4 to the agreement with FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC to provide additional engineering services associated with the Harbor Waterfront Resiliency Project. JR, is he, oh, there you are, up on the screen. And David?
Evening.
JR, do you want to lead us in this, please?
Yes, so as part of our permitting exercise, there's one element of the work that was not, was not appropriate to include within the CZM grant, and that is the, the town's decision to protect its property rights along the harbor front by engaging FOTH to prepare a CLOMAR. A CLOMAR is a conditional letter of map revision, and what it allows us to do is it will allow us to give to FEMA design data and modeling data that will demonstrate that when our harbor front infrastructure work is complete, that certain areas of the harbor will not, will no longer be in the velocity zone. At that point, FEMA can approve the CLOMAR, and then once all of the actual infrastructure work is complete and the, and we can provide ASBILTS to FEMA, we will submit the formal LOMAR and, and remove those particular areas from the velocity zone of the floodway. This would specifically apply to Barnes Wharf and to the town wharf, where at one point or another, there may be contemplation of future buildings.
And the cost of this is a little over $110,000?
Correct. We have the budget for that within the existing appropriation that was done, I believe, in ATM 2023 for $360,000. The reason that we have that available is because FOTH has vigorously assisted us in pursuing grant funding that has covered the majority of their design fees to date.
So the answer to that, JR, was you have that funding because of your excellent management? That's, that's really, yeah. Let me ask, what's the timing on when these funds would be expended and the work would be done?
We would hope to have this work completed, I believe, it may extend out beyond the fiscal year, but I would think by September or October.
So would this expenditure be within this fiscal year or next?
It would cross over the fiscal years. It would, a portion this fiscal year and a portion next fiscal year. However, it's, it was all appropriated at town meetings, so the funding, the funding source carries over. It's not from a, it's not from an operational fund that would require renewal.
So we wouldn't have a situation where money's reverting back? Okay.
No, we would not.
Okay. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, JR. So the term of the contract is, goes till June 30, 2026, though, but it sounds like you think the work will be done at the fall of '25?
This portion of the work will be done fall of '25, yeah.
Okay. And I, there's reference to a not-to-exceed amount of $147,000? Is that a different scope or?
Correct, correct. There's, there was additional scope that, at this time, I chose not to authorize.
Okay.
Because both of funding and it was not necessary to do that work at this time.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Bill?
Great. Yeah, JF, I could just unpack that a little bit. So the floodplain remapping that we're looking to get from FEMA, is that for just the waterfront area, or will it impact the properties of residents on the coast?
This remapping would only impact town-owned properties.
Okay, so just on the waterfront?
And directly along the coast.
Did that affect our, did that affect our insurance at all?
It really doesn't, because the, well, perhaps it would on Barnes Wharf, because we have actual structures there. But overall, there would still be a flood insurance component. It's just that these properties would be more protected against, against wave energy, and because of that, it opens up additional flexibility in how we can construct within the footprint of those landforms.
Okay, thank you.
But Bill, following up, is there any way that residents can benefit from this work to the extent that they could have their flood insurance reduced?
There, that's difficult to say, and it obviously, it varies by specific, specific instance and what the actual conditions are with each individual property. With that said, it could certainly be used as a model, and if people wanted some explanation of the process that we're going through, I'd be happy to provide it.
Great.
If I could just follow up on that. Well, the reason why I raise it, JR, is that every time FEMA realigns the maps, it does have an adverse impact on our, on our residents, particularly those on Otis Street, Crow Point, World's End, and, you know, we've seen insurance rates for our residents going up, and usually we have to get our congressional representatives involved to help with, with relief, so, but if the town owned properties, it's all good on my end. Thank you.
Yep.
Very good.
Any members of the public with questions on this? Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the Amendment Number 4 to the agreement with FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC to provide additional engineering services associated with the Harbor Waterfront Resiliency Project in an amount not to exceed $110,950.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This one didn't get applause, I noticed.
by telling you that we are closing in on completing the project. It's been a years-long effort. This is the fun part. We're furnishing the interior with what they call furnishings, fixture, and equipment. Gentlemen, which one of you would like to explain in greater detail what we're doing? We've, we're very conscious of the price, so this is, these are the priority fixtures that we've identified that we need to outfit the interior for both police and fire.
Could you just explain, I know that you've got several tiers of priority, where this falls in?
There's three, and this is the priority one. It represents the majority of the furniture and fixtures that will be inside of both the police facility, which constitutes the headquarters for the Town of Hingham Police Department, as well as the North Fire Station for the Hingham Fire Department, which is presently down in West Hingham. So the police chief, fire chief, their deputies, Deputy Levinson, Deputy O'Shea, Petiti, have work to identify that, those pieces of equipment and furniture which are necessary for the effective operation of both the police and the fire missions. So we've, we've come up with a contract with this, this vendor, people, places, and spaces, and we anticipate that this, if this contract is approved, the furniture will be brought in, it'll be assembled under the supervision and oversight of KBA, just to make sure it's put together right, because it all comes in packages, of course, so that's why we're here. It's, it's over 50,000. It's a significant figure, but yet this is a significant building. So with that, take any questions.
So what is the dollar amount we're talking about? I see it's a...
I'm going to break out my glasses.
It's a little over $469,000.
This is a big number.
Yes.
It's $469,605.
And it does represent the tier one, the one item that are highest priority?
Absolutely.
And the term of this is to be completed by the end, before or before July 31, hopefully well before that?
Yes, yes. We're, we're looking to get in there this summer. Can't give you the exact date, but we're in the right direction, and we're on the right pace.
So you began speaking, saying this was a year-long project. This has been a lot long, longer than a year-long project, and we salute you for seeing this through. It's going to be a major improvement for the town, and it represents our commitment to both police and fire to make sure that they have a home that works for them. So thank you.
I'd like to thank the members of the Building Committee, especially the Chair, Robert Garrity, Bruce McEloney, Tally Lauder, Donna Smallwood, Andy Touché, Joe Kelly, for all their hard work. It's been, everyone's shown up to the meetings. We've had a lot. We've met every other week now for years.
Yeah.
Almost there.
Bill, may I turn to you first?
Yeah, the building is coming along great. Tom and I go over there pretty regularly, at least once a month, to see the progress of it, and the schedule's on track. You've done a phenomenal job working within the budget that we have. I know that some issues came out, but I think the committee's been very disciplined and very cognitive of the fact that we only have so much money to build this building. It's looking great, and I often speak with our fire department and our police department, and they're thrilled to get in there. And I think we're, are we scheduled for a June opening?
Yeah, early, early summer.
Don't pin them down.
Easy, easy.
Well, my thanks to the committee for all your hard work and everything you all done.
Thanks very much.
Liz?
Yes, thank you, Paul, and the committee. It has been quite an effort over many, many years. I appreciate that this, we have a very tight budget, and you, the committee, the chiefs prioritizing is helpful and certainly what is required at this point. Hopefully, we can get to Priority 2 and 3 at some point, but thank you for the discipline on that. I see there's a lead time of 12 weeks.
Yes.
Do you have any concerns that they won't be able to meet that June timeframe?
Well, we have a pretty good team. I'm relying on the expertise of our OPM and our architect, and they haven't steered us wrong so far, so that's their projection.
Okay, great. No other questions?
Anyone out there with comments or questions on this? They're letting you off easy, Paul. I am prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with People, Places, and Spaces LLC to provide furniture and accessories to the Hingham Public Safety Building in an amount not to exceed $468,605.
That's $469,000.
$69,605.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. You're approved.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
I will say...
Town of Hingham, thank you very much.
People, places, and spaces, I thought they supplied, you know, furniture for kids. It just doesn't have a serious enough sound to it.
Sounds like the name of a band.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I know some folk... So I know some folks have come in a little late. Um, just so you know, we, we will not be getting to pickleball until probably like 8:20 at the earliest. So, um, you're free to stay, but just, uh, I want you to manage your expectations. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of exemptions for certain town employees. Under Mass General Law's Chapter 268A, Section 20, we have Mark Thorell. If you could just introduce yourself to the throngs of folks here and...
Uh, Mark Thorell, Director of Recreation. Good evening. It's common practice for municipal rec departments to partner and hire public school teachers, um, as independent contractors to help instruct a wide variety of programs. These programs can be anything from coaching field hockey to leading an arts and crafts class. These rec instructing jobs do not interfere with their teaching schedules or obligations. I have, uh, talked to John Coffin about this topic a number of times and he has made it clear that this arrangement can happen, but you just need to follow the right process. Part of that process is to have the select board vote in favor of allowing this arrangement to happen. Right now, we just have three teachers who are interested in partnering with us. One would help coach field hockey, one would help instruct, um, a trivia activity, and one would help instruct a variety of games and sports. Teachers are very talented and to be able to utilize their abilities for the benefit of Hingham's children is extremely helpful and critical to the success of the rec department. And we appreciate your consideration on this matter.
So this statute is intended to anticipate and avoid potential conflicts of interest?
That's correct.
I don't see the conflict, but I want to ask, I mean, do you see a potential for conflict here with the teachers having that role, uh, in the town?
No, I, I do not. It's outside of their working hours. Oftentimes it has nothing to do with, with what they're doing in the public schools, so, um, I don't see any conflict at all.
Tom, any, uh, any comment on that?
Nope, and I've spoken with, uh, John Coffin, our town council, who's online if you'd like to ask him, but, um, we believe this is acceptable and appropriate.
And I believe we've done this in prior years.
We have.
Yes. Liz, any questions?
Um, I don't really have any, well, I guess I have one question. Um, I don't see it as a conflict and I, the three teachers that are listed here, we'd be absolutely lucky to have them as part of the rec department. And just to clarify, this is a case-by-case basis, so this will come before this board for each person each year? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it would have to come before the board anytime there was a new teacher interested in it, in helping us out.
Okay. No other questions?
Bill, any questions?
I echo what Liz said. I know the three teachers personally and they'll be great additions to the after-school program.
Thank you.
As a courtesy, has, has anyone asked the school department if there's any issues here with them?
Uh, I, I believe that you've been in full contact with them a long way, right?
I have not, but I, I, I can get in touch with them. I've kind of just communicated with the teachers themselves.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see the issue and it's a decision for this board to make, not the school committee, but as a courtesy, I think if you don't mind just letting them know.
Sure.
That'd be great. Any member of the public? Comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the requested exemptions for the following school department employees under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B4, to allow said employees to perform contractual services for the Town of Hingham Recreation Department. Kathleen M. Joyce, Chris Davidson and Erica Shinney.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well. We are approved.
I would just note for the record that, uh, Mr. Davidson had all three of my kids, so you, you probably need to give him, pay him double.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the preliminary, preliminary fiscal year '26 financial forecast update. And on the line, we have Michelle.
This is a very brief update tonight. Just get it up on the screen. So as you know, we update the financial forecast a few times during the budget season. The most recent update, we changed a couple of numbers based on the February bond and ban sale. So we updated the debt service, the motor vehicle excise tax, based on the first commitment that comes in in January. But just kind of the, the bottom line upfront, the current budget deficit for FY '26 is about $476,000. Um, not a bad place to be at this part of the process. The last big piece of information that we're waiting for are the health insurance rates for FY '26, which were actually released today from the GIC. So we're working on the health insurance budget for next year. The news wasn't great. The rates went up between seven and 15% depending on the health plan for current employees and for retirees. So we'll work on those numbers and you'll see those included in the next forecast.
Folks hearing this for the first time, a question why being almost a half million dollars down is not such a bad place? Why is that?
Uh, only because, so the health insurance budget is one of our largest budgets. It's around $8 million for the year and we typically budget conservatively at this point in the process and just, um, forecast 10% more than the prior year's budget. And typically at this time when we get that rate information, we're usually able to find a bit of savings there to help close the gap. If we're not able to close it completely, we have some stabilization funds and some other, other accounts and overlay, um, that operate more like one-time funds to close gaps in the next couple of years. But, um, still at this point in the process, I'm, I'm not alarmed or worried about that number. Again, we'll see what comes from health insurance in the next few days.
And by town meeting, this gap will be closed?
Yes, it will.
Yes. Bill, any questions?
Yeah, we're already with state aid. Do we know any word from our legislators on, is it gonna increase or be the same as last year?
So far, we just have the governor's proposal in there, which was better than we had originally projected, but, um, we'll keep following that as the House and Senate bring their proposals forward. That process won't be done by the time we have to go to town meeting, so we'll kind of put in the latest proposal that, that's coming from the legislature.
Is, is your, is the 476, is that with an estimation of state aid being the same as last year?
No, it's better than, it's with the governor's proposal, better than last year.
476 is a pretty good spot at this point, actually. I mean, I think it's better than where we've been in previous years. So, I mean, one year we were, we were at 2.2 million at this point. So I'm feeling happy about the 476. That's a pretty good spot. Thank you.
Liz?
Thank you, Michelle. Do you think we'll have the, um, insurance numbers for our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So we'll look at it again next agenda?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Michelle, um, what's our expectation with respect to federal money?
Our operating budget doesn't rely too much, at least on the municipal side, on the, on the federal, federal funding. I know on the school side, there's more grants and, and different funding sources that come from there. There's a lot of uncertainty in the federal environment right now. So we're kind of waiting and seeing how that may play out at the local level.
Great. Okay, this is not an item to be voted on, but if there are any questions from members of the public, please ask them. Yes, ma'am, if you can just come up to the mic? And your name and address.
Susan Wetzel, 239 High Street. Uh, I had difficulty hearing you and, and I don't know if you guys can speak into the mic and ladies, it's difficult. We're, we're sitting over there and you are kind of the back. So I, I just wanted some clarification on your understanding of how the current changes that are coming down federally and how that will impact the town potentially. Most importantly, how is that going to impact our school budget? And many other proposed changes that are coming down the pipe, the $110 million electric company, uh, that is, uh, the charge for the transmission line that is proposed for the town in the next, I think, two years. The siting board is coming up, a meeting on that. And the $34 million that's proposed for the, uh, senior center. And I, I was looking around at all the shoes here because there were so many sneakers. I'm like, why are there so many sneakers? And then I realized, probably pickleball. But when I looked at those shoes, I thought about all the families here in Hingham that are currently impacted by the economics of this town. The fact that the taxes have gone up, the fact that we are constantly under barrage and some families are buying four and five pairs of sneakers and how are they managing? So my question is clarification on how you as the select board and Michelle, maybe you can help us more, understanding all the changes that are coming. I just got a phone call from a cousin who has now taken the, the buyout from the government because it doesn't just impact, it impacts a lot of families. So maybe you can address that for the, for the folks here since there are so many that are asking for so much. Thank you.
So that's, that's a great question. Um, it's a little beyond, uh, the scope of, of exactly what the financial forecast is about, but it is something that's on the minds of, of our residents and I appreciate that. The money that, that Hingham gets typically comes through, from the state. The state then gets the money from the federal government. And the, the state budget has anticipated to some extent, uh, where the federal government's going. But there will certainly be broader impacts, as you suggest. And particularly on the schools, um, there's, you know, there's announcements about what's going to happen with the Department of Education and you're, you're spot on in recognizing that as a concern. At this point, we are managing our budget based upon the known information that we have. And you're right to say that there are a number of items coming up, um, that may require additional taxes, uh, additional revenue, uh, to come in. We have, to some extent, planned for those so that we have some stabilization funds. So to the extent that, um, there's a requirement for additional revenue, we have, if you will, banked some money so that there's not an immediate hit. It'll be more gradual. Uh, but as services are demanded, um, and the town responds, we, there will be an impact. And our job is to, uh, make sure that our residents can manage that and that we are forthcoming in providing the information. Michelle, do you want to add anything specifically?
Um, just to say, some of your questions about what's happening at the federal level are the ones that we're asking too. It's, uh, almost every day we open the news and there's a different headline that's creating more uncertainty. The local revenues that the town relies on are more on the property taxes, as, as you all know. And the town has, the board and town meeting have taken steps in the last few years to put additional tax exemptions and programs in place for people. I would say if, um, if people aren't familiar with those, our assessing team is amazing. They're located on the first floor and there's a number of exemptions for seniors in particular that can combine, be combined with some of the other statutory exemptions that can really add up to hundreds, if not thousands of dollars to, to kind of help folks, support the, the different services and, and projects that we've put forward. But thank you for your question. Thank you for your concern. And at the federal level, we'll, we'll do the best we can to kind of keep everything whole here. We did get a few waves of several funding, kind of from the pandemic to help us through that time. And we just got the last tranche of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, from Plymouth County that helped with a major sewer project, stormwater and other things that offset the cost to ratepayers. So we are not giving a penny of those dollars back. I don't really care who comes to ask for them. They're in Hingham's bank accounts now and we're, we're doing those projects. So, um, hopefully we can kind of weather this storm of uncertainty. But I would definitely, um, promote all the resources that our assessing department has put in place. And even if you think you don't qualify, there's a number of different programs, including tax deferral, depending on your situation. So, um, Erin Delaney and her team on the first floor are excellent and are happy to help anyone, um, who has any questions or concerns.
And, and just to, to build on that, um, when we have large expenditures, you mentioned 35 million or whatever the capital expenditure is, we go out and borrow. And what the taxpayers bear is essentially the interest rate associated with that borrowing. And so this board has been vigilant to make sure that we have the highest rating possible, which keeps our interest rate costs down so that the cost that flows to the residents is the lowest we can possibly get. So that's one way we're seeking to address it, but, you know, we are always, uh, mindful of, of the impact on our residents. So, so thank you for raising that. I'm now prepared to move on to consider, um... Oh, I'm sorry, where's? Oh, online?
Online?
Oh, I missed it, sorry. Yes, I see, I see the hand raised?
Hi, my, my name's Karen Carley. I'm at 226 High Street in Hingham. And I'm just piggybacking on that question. The school department's budget is already taking up a significant share of the overall budget, rendering it unsustainable for Hingham to handle. Can you guys please confirm that Hingham has developed a contingency plan in case of losing any of this money? Because of what's going on with the Department of Education, especially last year, because of the, um, with the MOU that we are also uncertain about what that number's gonna be each year? So I'm just very, very concerned about the school budget.
So, um, speaking about the...
And wondering if you have a plan, if you talk to the school, if you have something, some backing, just to make sure that the funds are gonna be there if we do lose state and federal funds.
So, um, unlikely that we're losing state and federal funds. And to the extent that they are incorporated in the budget, they primarily, primarily represent funds that are already committed. The MOU, which is a cap on the operational budget, is being honored by the school committee as well as by the select board. And, uh, the funds, whether they are going on the school side or the municipal side, come primarily from property taxes and those funds are not going away.
But what about the funds that are coming from, um, that are supporting the schools, like the federal funding?
So those...
I mean, that have a huge impact on the schools and it could also have a huge impact on servicing these children and getting the, um, and then they would have to go out of District Two and where else we have that MOU that we have to deal with. So I'm very concerned and I'm just hoping that the select board has sat down and made a plan with the school committee so we're not trying to build the airplane as we're flying.
Not trying to build the airplane as we're flying. Um, and quite frankly, um, we are...
Like we were during COVID. You know, that's all I'm trying to prevent.
Yeah, no, no, that, that, you're exactly right. Um, we are all together in the same boat. And, uh, we are in regular communication with the school committee. And, uh, we are jointly coming together. We will be coming together at town meeting, uh, with the budget proposal. So, uh...
Okay.
We're, we're not looking, we don't see the floor dropping out, but certainly if something dramatic happens, we will get together and, uh, make appropriate adjustments.
Sooner rather than later?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I want. Thank you.
Okay. Michelle, is there anyone else I'm missing?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to consider the addition and removal of certain warrant articles in the 2025 annual town meeting warrant. And the first one is for Article UU to add, which is for the DPW vehicles and equipment. Michelle, are you gonna lead this?
Sure, and we're joined by our Capitol Alley Committee Chair, Mike Donovan, if you want to join me up here.
Oh, there, okay, great.
So this article is coming out of the Capitol Alley Committee's Presentation and Recommendations a week or so ago.
Before you go on, can you hear us now? Are the microphones? We'll, we'll do our best. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You guys can. Okay. So this is coming out of the Capitol Alley Committee's Recommendations, um, a week or so ago about the FY '26 capital plan. I think the committee, we took a different approach this year and they, they spent time in different facilities, hearing directly from staff and seeing the vehicles and equipment and facilities that folks are working with to provide services across town. And there was significant concern, I think, on the committee's part, on the state of several DPW, um, large vehicles and equipment. The DPW, oh my God, the DPW vehicles are difficult because each one is very expensive. So the committee is proposing an article to be able to fund 11 of them and catch up. Many of these vehicles have been deferred for years and years and we're, we're kind of putting good money after bad, um, trying to patch them and, and keep them running rather than trying to replace them.
Mike, did you want to add anything?
Sure. Um, Mike Donovan, we're through Woodlock Road, Chair of the Capitol Alley Committee. So for those of you who enjoyed the rapid response in our last snowstorm, you know, our DPW team worked really hard to get the roads cleared. A lot of those vehicles are 10 years plus older, are literally rotting from underneath. A lot of those vehicles are 10 years plus older, are literally rotting from underneath. We have one vehicle that clears the mountainous streets in town, meaning Crow Point, that throws salt in front of the rear wheels, like in terrible condition. And as Michelle said, these vehicles typically cost $300,000 to $400,000 a piece, about 10% of the tax levy. Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
And so we've always struggled as a committee to, you know, weigh the replacement of, you know, vehicles such as, you know, loaders and sanders with things that support the residents' needs, you know, from a fire, police department standpoint and other criteria. So as we looked, you know, as Mr. Fisher said, we, you know, we did travel around to the various buildings this year, and we had the opportunity to be hosted at DPW and saw all these vehicles firsthand. And our committee, you know, really thought that now was the time. I know we just had some comments from another resident about capital expenditures and spending, but we have, as a town, haven't been addressing these needs on some of these vehicles that keep our roads safe, allow students to get to school, police and fire to help people around town. So as we weighed our options, we certainly wanted to leverage the tax levy for recurring items, but also challenge the town to really step up and invest in infrastructure. That's key. So, you know, we identified a number of vehicles, some of which have been on back or on, you know, deferral status since I joined the COVID in 2017. We really think now is the time to replace them because if they break, we're going to be up a creek without a paddle.
And you mentioned that we've deferred them for a while, and as a result, we've incurred the repair costs and the maintenance costs. So this has, while it's an expenditure, it's going to be reflected to some extent with savings on the other side.
Correct. And our maintenance, the maintenance has been very, I think, done a great job over the years of making these assets last as long as they can. You know, they're not cars with, you know, 20,000 miles we're looking to replace. They've got hundreds of thousands and hours on them. And so, you know, you can't just go replace them down at Best Chevrolet either if they break in the middle of a snowstorm. So I think we need to be diligent and responsible by making sure we've got assets that are ready to go and we need them.
Can you comment to the extent you know about the lead time? Because sometimes you order a vehicle and it can be, you know, eight months or even longer to get it.
Yep. So after COVID, as, you know, we saw a lot of challenges with some of our light truck orders and some of the other departments. These vehicles, Randy had said, have about a six to nine month lead time. So if approved at town meeting in April, we can execute contracts in July. We should have them hopefully by next winter season. There are some vehicles that we're still waiting for from two years ago, I believe. But these are sort of, just given the specialized nature of them, in less demand and more readily available.
Great. Liz.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. And thank you to the committee for making this suggestion. I heard it loud and clear, and I appreciate you going and visiting the DPW and seeing the vehicles firsthand. I think this board has very high expectations of the Department of Public Works. I know our citizens have very high expectations. I still hear concerns from residents about the roads and the sidewalks. So I do want to make sure that we are equipping the DPW and setting them up for success or a chance of being successful and meeting our expectations. So I do think this is a good investment in a good use of unassigned fund balances. It's exactly what it should be used for, in my opinion, in terms of capital.
Great. Bill.
A lot of the vehicles identified in the slide are also multipurposed. Mike mentioned the primary use of no plowing and sanding, but they're also used for transfer station operations as well as earth removal and other activities around town. The transfer station items specifically up there, compactor number three and item nine, I believe those are well over their, the use that they should be. And there's a concern with DPW that if they go, it's going to slow operations down to transfer station, which, as we know, services thousands and thousands of people every weekend. So the 1.6 for capital, capital costs, as Liz pointed out, I think is a good use of it. Also, I'd note that we have deferred DPW maintenance for way too long. So this is well needed, and appreciate Capitol Alley bringing it forward.
Absolutely. Any member of the public, questions or comments? Anything online, Michelle? Okay. We're going to do each one separate. So I'm prepared to take a motion on this.
All right. So this is UU, right?
Yes.
All right. I'd make a motion to open the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting pursuant to Town of Hingham General Bylaws, Article II, Section 7, and add Article UU, DPW vehicles and equipment, and to recommend favorable action on Article UU and to close the warrant.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I'm, and I as well. We'll move on to the next one, which is to remove Article V, the Fire Department Capital Projects. Is Mike, he can escape there?
No, this one's.
Okay. So that's going to be you, Tom. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So this was an article we had contemplated, trying to improve the HVAC equipment over at Central Fire that needs it. A lot of people have seen, we've done a lot of roof work and siding work on that property. But we've identified a couple of grant opportunities to help us ultimately pay for that HVAC work. And it's, unfortunately, it stepped. So we're going to find, we have a grant identified that will help us weatherize that property. Once it's properly weatherized, we'll be better positioned to ask for grant money, seek grant money for the actual HVAC work the following year. So by doing this, we're hoping to save quite a bit of the money that we would have otherwise been asking for this year. It might take a year longer to get it done, but there'll be progress along the way. So I'm comfortable asking to remove this article and not spend this money this year.
And I assume you've spoken with Chief Murphy?
I have.
And?
He understood.
He understood. Okay. Great. Liz.
No questions. I support this. It sounds like if it's not high priority for this year, we don't have the time or money at this town meeting.
Bill.
I was also happy to hear that we have leftover money previously allocated to fix the roof at Station 3. Is that correct?
That is correct. Exactly.
Excellent.
Okay. So then we're going to do the removals all together. So we'll do the next one, which is Article OO, the High School Bike Walking Path. And Vicki, come on up.
Thank you very much. Vicki Donlin, 12th floor at Circle. And I'm here because the bike path was proposed by several residents that I've been spearheading.
Could you just move the mic a little bit closer?
All right. Thank you. Bob Curly, Joe Fisher, George Dennis, several other residents who had proposed that we work on this project. I think it might be the microphone. That we work on this project. And having talked with the state about the potential grant, I was told that many towns do the most work they can upfront. So I reached out to J.R. Frye, our engineer, and he was more than happy to say, yes, he would help work on this. Obviously, the time between now and town meeting, we don't have time to get this. I know that Emily Wentworth will also work on this with us. The problem is, is that they are very busy at this time of year, as we all know. I also plan to, so I want people to know, we may be taking it off the warrant, but I will be presenting it to the REC Commission so that the REC will be able to work on this project and hopefully be able to bring a project to CPC next year so that we have the opportunity to move forward. I was told that a project such as this, a bike path creating a high school connection to basically all South Shore towns throughout Wampe Tuck, would be high on the list of state grants, which is about $100,000. So this is the reason I wanted to remove this now and move it forward perhaps into CPC next year.
So do you think that there'd be state funds available to assist with this?
The grant that is available is available before the project is actually completed. It's a $100,000 grant. I was told that a proposal of this type, a bike path creating, connecting a high school with other South Shore towns would be high on the list. So yes, there is a grant, and it isn't reimbursable. It's actually a grant that can come upfront. We would obviously need to get the work ready so that we know exactly what it is we're doing. But we can apply for the grant. The grant, application is due by February 1st of next year. And as you all know, CPC would be voting in January for something like this. So we would have the opportunity to do the, get the, basically the proposal worked on before we needed to do the work.
Got it. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you for advocating for this, Vicki, and working on it this next year.
You're welcome.
Bill.
No questions.
Tom, anything you need to add?
Nope. Thank you, Vicki.
Great.
Any member of the public? Seeing none, we will move on to Article GGG, which is updating the Section VK Accessory Dwelling Units.
So this article was withdrawn by the planning board and asked, have subsequently asked that we remove.
So this is being removed at the request of the planning board?
That's right.
Got it. I've got no questions then. Liz?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Any member of the public? So with that, I'm prepared to accept a motion on the removal of these warrant articles.
I will make a motion to remove the following articles from the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Article V, Fire Department Capital Projects. Article OO, High School Bike Walking Path. And Article GGG, Updating Section VK Accessory Dwelling Units.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm, and I as well. We now move on to discussion and possible votes on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. The following one. First will be Article Y, which is the citizen petition, construction, demolition, and commercial landscaping activity. This is a citizen petition. Is Mike Cransley here?
It'll just take one minute for him to come back.
Oh.
I think he might be up top with his hand up.
It kind of kicks him out and pulls him back.
I'll pull him back here.
Mike, please explain what your proposal is. There we go.
There we go.
Okay. If you can just introduce yourself, name and address, and then.
Michael Cransley, 18 Marion Street. Chairman Fisher and members of the Select Board. I really wanted to be there tonight, but I'm suffering from the flu, and you are far better off with me being here.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for considering Warren Article Y for this year's town meeting. This article is straightforward. I'm asking town meeting to amend Article 42.7B of the town bylaw to change the hours allowed for construction and commercial landscaping. Specifically, I propose a schedule of Monday through Friday with no change in hours, Saturday 8 to 5, and no construction or commercial landscaping on Sundays and national holidays. I'm seeking to carve out a few hours each week for peace in our neighborhoods. Zoning serves a vital purpose in our neighborhoods by separating incompatible land uses. Residential areas are intentionally kept away from industrial zones and busy commercial districts to protect residents from noise and disruption. In this context, construction and commercial landscaping act as temporary industrial zones within our residential districts. For teardown projects, temporary can mean months or even years. With commercial landscaping, the noise can be nearly constant from April through October. When the original noise ordinance was established, its authors could not have foreseen the tremendous growth we've seen in our neighborhoods. Last year alone, we received over 50 applications for teardowns. Considering the 300-foot radius for notifying impacted neighbors, that means roughly 650 families were directly impacted by these projects last year. On Crow Point, we've witnessed several projects involving removal of significant amounts of lead, leading to weeks and in some cases, months of jackhammering. A jackhammer can produce noise levels up to 120 decibels, the equivalent of a jet taking off. Imagine that relentless noise, day in, day out, for 12 hours a day. Moreover, the authors of the noise ordinance likely didn't anticipate the proliferation of commercial landscapers. It's reasonable to assume that a majority of our residents utilize their services. The equipment used in commercial landscaping can generate noise levels exceeding 100 decibels, comparable to the sound of a rock concert. I'm asking for one day, a day where families can enjoy a peaceful breakfast on the patio, children can play in the yard, and individuals can reflect solitude without the disruptive sounds of machinery. That is the Sunday I envisioned for our community, a day when we can cherish our families and embrace tranquility. I ask for your support of Warren Article Y. Together, we can reclaim a peaceful day for our neighborhoods. Thank you for your attention and your commitment to making our town a better place.
So in my understanding, that what you're proposing, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is an amendment to the Noise Bylaw, Section 7B, and so.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Because what we have before us is, doesn't quite say that. And I think, at least I was puzzled as to whether or not you're proposing an addition bylaw or whether you're seeking to amend the current bylaw. So it's really this B.
Yes. It's amending that, yes.
Yeah, amending Section 7B.
Yes.
And it'd be helpful to understand what you have and how it differs from what is currently in the bylaw. So the first sentence, which is no person shall operate, that is verbatim what's already there.
Yep.
Okay. And we've got it. Between the hours of 7:00 PM and 6:59 AM the following day on weekdays, or, so that is already there. Between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:59 PM, the following, so you are adding the Saturdays and on Mondays and the national holidays? Is that correct?
Yeah, Bill. I, it's hard to read. The 7B is hard to read, and my amendment to 7B is no easier to read, but I use the same language that is in the current bylaw. So yes, basically what I'm saying is keep the hours the same Monday through Friday, shorten the hours a little bit on Saturday, 8 to 5, and no construction on Sundays and national holidays.
Got it.
And so we're basically reducing the hours from 83 hours a week total to 69 hours a week. So we still have a lot of hours.
Have you had the chance to discuss this with the building department?
I have not.
Have you had a chance to review it with either the planning department or any of the other boards in town?
Since this is a town bylaw, I just spoke to one planning board member, but I did not speak to the entire planning board.
Got it. Bill.
Yeah, so I, Mike, good evening. Thanks for, thanks for your efforts with this. I know you and I have talked about some of the issues going on at Crow Point. Appreciate you bringing it forward. I personally would like to get a little more information. I haven't had a chance to talk to Mike Clancy. He's our building commissioner and would be the enforcement officer for this. I'd also like to just speak to the police chief before I get behind it. So if I could wait a week, that'd be helpful to me. If it's not a big, actually, wouldn't be a week. Actually, we do Tuesday night.
Right. So our next.
That'd be helpful. But I, the intent of it is well received. Just want to make sure we do it right and don't have any collateral impacts that we're not intending.
Bill? I'm happy to join you in those meetings if you, if you care, if I'm well.
Awesome. That'd be great.
And so what Bill is proposing is that we take it up at our meeting this coming Tuesday.
That's great. Yeah. I, I can do, yeah, I'll do that. Yes.
Great. Liz.
Thank you, Mike, for bringing it forward. I agree. Take a couple more days to do a little more due diligence and take it up next week. But thank you, Mike, for bringing it forward.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So before you leave, I don't know if there's anyone here who has any comments about this proposed warrant article. I am seeing, anyone online, Michelle? Okay. So we will take this up at our next meeting on Tuesday, and in interim, we will do some additional due diligence on our end.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Article CC. And I said we're going to be waiting until about 8:20, when the advisory committee liaison will be available to either participate or at least listen to this discussion. So I would like to skip ahead to Article Z, which is the Center for Active Living Design, Bid Documents, and OPM Funds. which is the Center for Active Living Design Bid Documents and OPM Funds. Let me get that right here before we do that.
Yeah, I'll be doing it.
Have Tom come up? Tom's here.
So we have... Is Jennifer here as well?
She, I believe she's online.
Okay.
Tom Carey's here as well.
Do you want to lead this?
Give the presentation.
Right.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's your...
I hope I'm just here to listen.
But you can introduce yourself to the...
Tom Carey, 1131 Main Street.
And you are chair of?
The Building Committee.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Mr. Mayo?
So this board has heard presentations on this project about three or four different times throughout the effort, so this is a summary presentation in advance of your potential vote for Article Z itself. Okay, so just a very brief slide history. Back in a little over 10 years ago, the town began this process of looking for a new senior center with some studies. Now called the Center for Active Living. That said, there have been several town meeting votes along the way in supporting the effort to research. The siting process by this board and the building committee have been completed. They analyzed both Town Hall as well as the site over at Bearcove Park. And the Bearcove Park Drive property was selected as the appropriate site, and a preliminary design was completed subsequently by our selected consultant, an architect. So that preliminary design, the completion of that preliminary design occurred some month or two ago through Tom's building committee. It's been presented to this board, and you'll recall, the size of the project is roughly 28,000 square feet with an estimated cost of approximately $35 million. That is all projected, early preliminary design size and cost. All of that would be vetted through the design and permitting process to happen during the course of the coming year, should this article pass. So one more. So just from an operational standpoint, just to be clear, the staff are actively evaluating a potential fee-based revenue stream and to help offset some of the additional costs that we would need with relation to staff, additional staff to help operate a larger and certainly more dynamic Center for Active Living. We have looked closely at Marshfield's model. They also have a new CAL a couple of years ago, equally, or comparably sized community. So we would anticipate, based on their model, significant usage increases and subsequent revenue opportunities. That said, I think that by, one of the things that excites me most about this project, if it were to be built, is the idea of it being built down at Bearcove Park really offers some significant additional benefits that perhaps don't exist here at Town Hall, as much as I love this location. For my office, I think the idea of some outdoor programming, intergenerational programming opportunities for the seniors in town is really exciting. So anyway, that's just from an operational standpoint. The article itself required that we get a couple of additional permitting processes done outside of the local regulatory process. The National Park Service was a big one. Remember that this park, Bearcove Park, was a part of the National Parks, or based a parks program back in the 70s. We have care, custody, and control over it, given by the National Park Service, and through a concession agreement to manage it according to a series of rules. They have reviewed this now, as I write in here, that we were required to file information regarding the project, for a NEPA review. The National Park Service has now determined that this project is in fact categorically excluded, which allows us to move forward without any further federal review, which was really a welcome, welcome outcome. You know, it was kind of a shot in the dark. We really, we're hoping that we were going to get that, save a lot of legal dollars and time and staff bandwidth down for the next year or two. But thankfully, we got that process in large part thanks to our real estate, special real estate council, Susan Murphy, and her efforts. That said, we do have an Article 97 process that we will be walking through. We have begun this process with the state of Massachusetts. This will take about another year. There's some processes that we've already begun. We've met with them, received positive feedback along the way, and that's directly related to Article AA. And again, this is an attempt at offsetting the land being developed for the Center for Active Living at Bearcove Park with equal, land of equal value elsewhere in town for conservation purposes. Okay, next slide. Article Z itself, I'm not going to read the article, but it's really about funding the bid, the design, construction, excuse me, design permitting, et cetera, for leading up to construction bids. It's also funding an OPM, owner's project manager. Roughly $2.25 million will be required for the design concept, the entirety of the design effort. The OPM will be another quarter million dollars, $250,000 there. The design fees are going to cover local permitting, sustainability consulting, some solar design, FF and E design, geotechnical work, a traffic study, and some wetlands and environmental work as those would be needed. So it's anticipated that that full $2.5 million will be expended from the excess fund balance that we discussed in prior meetings. And also, just to note that I just mentioned $35 million a minute ago. Should this go forward, this was part of that. So that 35 would be deducted by the $2.5 million that we're talking about for this article at this stage. So given that...
Tom, thank you. Tom Carey, is there anything you wanted to add?
No.
That was...
He's covered it very well. We've been before you a number of times.
You have.
I would simply add that you're getting a great bargain on your building committee, which takes no fun.
And we thank you for your work. But this project really represents the town's commitment and this board's commitment to our senior population. We've made this a priority. We have funded other aspects of town before with the commitment that it would be time for the Center for Active Living to move forward, and this is the time. So and this is the really, the next step to make it happen. So Tom, thank you for your leadership and your committee's work here. Liz?
Yes, thank you, Tom, and thank you to the committee. This has also been many, many years of work and a tremendous amount of work, and I know it's still going on, so thank you. I fully support moving forward with the design. I think that makes perfect sense. I like this phased approach and great news on the National Park Service approval. That was a risk going in, moving forward with this site. So that's really good news, really good news. No other questions.
Bill?
Yeah, so I want to thank Tom Carey and his committee. I think I saw Beth Rulo walk in at 1.2. She's been a phenomenal advocate for this project, so my thanks there. And that was great news about the Park Service. I did not know that. So that's fantastic. I was concerned about that. In terms of the Article 97 approval, Tom, is that just a special act or does it, special act, okay?
Pretty much. It's a special act. It has some review on the conservation stuff. It's a two-thirds vote. Beacon Hill can be a funny place, but there are some things you can count on. Don't antagonize the speaker. And when a fellow legislator comes in with a local act, you'd be crazy not to make a friend, because you'll be coming in yourself with those. My own judgment is that the way we've got this positioned and what we will be presenting, and with the support of our legislators, with our rep and our senator, it should not be a problem.
Yes, and our rep and senator have been very active in supporting this.
Yes, absolutely, as the senator has as well. So we've got strong support from our delegation, a good project. And although if you didn't know the system, the two-thirds, oh, might scare you. The fact of the matter is, I think we're in excellent shape.
Great.
And I would note as well for people in the audience, this is the procedure we've used for the last several capital projects, where we, on first year, we go to town meeting to get design money. We socialize the project, build interest in the project, create discussion on the project, and then it takes a year to go back to town meeting to get the money to build the building. So looking forward to, we've had a lot of interest in this project over the last six to 12 months. It's been fantastic. I'd ask people to continue to stay involved, continue to give us your input as we can move along, and I'm hopeful for a positive vote at town meeting.
So Tom, we just covered Article Z. Do you want to move on to Article AA?
I mentioned that in the article. This is the Article 97 filing, is all Article AA is.
Okay, any further questions or comments from any member of the public? I am seeing none, so I'm prepared to take a motion on Article Z and on Article AA.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article Z.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an a as well.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article AA.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an a as well. Both are approved. Tom, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tom?
Thank you, Jen.
So we have left the pickleball courts and the CPC recommendations. I think it makes sense to do the CPC after pickleball only because one of the recommendations in CPC is the pickleball courts. So I have not heard from our AdCom rep yet as to whether or not he's available. I'm going to recommend we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs, and then I will reconvene and hopefully we can resume with the pickleball. We are recessed for five minutes. I appreciate you indulging this brief recess, and we will now reconvene to consider Article CC, the new pickleball courts. And I will ask Vicki Donlin to come up to the microphone. And Mark, you're going to join her. And both of your mics are on green?
Yes.
Okay, great. So please, introduce yourselves and begin.
Mark Thorell, Director of Recreation.
Vicki Donlin, Chair of Recreation Department Commission.
And what are you proposing?
I was gonna say, we, there are a couple openings, open seats up front, of Mark and Vicki obviously up here, but we have a couple of streets people want to come up.
Yes, please come up, take the seats, and also before we go...
Mr. Carpenter, come on up.
Before we go any further, Bill, did you want to make a statement?
I do, yeah, if I could. I just want to know for the record that I'm recused on this, on this warrant article. I've had conversations with Town Council about this. I know a lot of people involved with this process on both sides have reached out to me and encouraged me to participate. But I want to know for the record that my wife is an elected official. She serves on the Recreation Commission. While there may not be a legal conflict of interest, clearly, clearly, is an apparent conflict of interest. If I was to say that we didn't talk about this article multiple times, I wouldn't be being truthful. So I'm going to recuse myself for transparency process. Wouldn't be appropriate for me to participate in tonight's discussion, number one. And number two, I don't want to come home this evening and find my stuff on my front lawn. So I'm just going to sit here and listen. Thank you.
He wants to be above dinner at the house. Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss the Rec Commission warrant article for the construction of dedicated pickleball courts. Since our last meeting, the Rec Commission held a public meeting on Thursday, February 28th, to provide a forum for the residents to ask the Sound Consultant, Asean Tech, questions. The meeting was very informative, and I think overall, the residents appreciated the ability to ask more questions. At the March 4th Recreation Commission meeting, the Rec Commission voted all in favor to request funding for Sound Mitigation Option 1 for the Pickleball Courts project. This option is the most aggressive form of sound mitigation recommended by Asean Tech. Given the level of concerns expressed by the abutters, the Rec Commission felt that moving forward with the most aggressive form of sound mitigation was the right course of action. Sound Mitigation Option 1 will offer 15-foot-high fences along with 15-foot-high acoustical panels around the perimeter of the courts. The total project cost with Sound Mitigation Option 1 is $2,036,600. CPC has voted to approve the Rec Commission's funding request of $758,640. This leaves a balance of $1,277,960. The Rec Commission is now respectively requesting $1,277,960 from the town in order to construct dedicated pickleball courts. A final update is that we asked Asean Tech to compare the proposed pickleball courts with the Model Noise Ordinance for Pickleball. This noise pollution, the Noise Pollution Clearinghouse developed a Model Noise Ordinance for Pickleball. The document uses the U.S. EPA Model Noise Ordinance as a basis. Multiple nonprofits and individuals supported and funded this noise ordinance, including the abutters' noise consultant. Michelle, if you could pull up that one graph. So with the results reported in Table 1 that Asean Tech put together, all locations meet the requirements with a significant margin. Figure 1 compares the 50-decibel adjusted sound level limit to the minimum and maximum sound levels for mitigation option 1, which is the 15-foot-high screens. So R1 through R5 represent different addresses. R1 is 14 Adams Court with a high of 29 decibels. R2 is 29 Hillside Terrace with a max of 37 decibels. R3 is 10 Edgar Walker Court with a max of 36 decibels. R4 is 20 Isaac Sprague Drive with a max of 34 decibels. And R5, 31 Franklin Rogers Road, has a max of 35 decibels. So to summarize, the highest level recorded at any address is 37 decibels, which is 13 decibels less than the max level recommended by the Model Noise Ordinance for Pickleball, which is the most stringent standard and criteria that we could find. Hingham has an enormous pickleball community. Over 500 pickleball-playing residents are all connected through a pickleball app called Team Reach. The construction of dedicated pickleball courts would positively impact the Hingham tennis community. Tennis courts in Hingham are in high demand, especially since the closure of the Foster School Courts and the loss of the South Shore Country Club Courts. Hingham has lost six courts in the last two years. It is well documented that physical activity and being social are critical to one's mental and physical health. Recreation is for all ages and generations, and the fact that there is a large senior pickleball community is a huge positive. Pickleball is here to stay, as it's still the fastest-growing sport in America. The growing pickleball community is passionate and are eager to have their needs met. We are extremely excited for this project and appreciate the Select Board's consideration.
Vicki, did you want to add anything?
I'd like to add two things. One is, and I know that we have a pickleball aficionado and teacher over here, several in the room. This is a sport that children are starting to play all over the country. It'll only grow here in Hingham. That's number one. Number two, this project is, I like to call it one and done. What we're proposing is post-tension concrete courts with a 30-year lifespan. I'm going to guess pretty much all of us, I'll speak for myself. It's going to outlive me. How about that? And that's what the Rec Department likes to present. Something that not going to require maintenance, not going to require the need for the town to continue to go back and forth. This is high-quality pickleball courts that can be enjoyed by the entire town, which will continue to grow with pickleball. Thank you.
Do either one of you want to comment on the proximity of the proposed courts to the proposed Center for Active Living?
I don't know the exact footage from the courts to the proposed location.
So this was a softball question for you?
That's right, that's right.
About the advantages to the senior community of having it there.
That's right.
So I'm not looking...
So I will answer that. So I will answer that. Let me answer that. Since I've also, I am also on the Hingham for Center for Active Living Building Committee. And since day one, as I am the one who's been proposing Bear Cove for the Center for Active Living, probably for about two and a half years, this, this is such a perfect spot because seniors are the growing population. It is something that benefits seniors, and it will only add to getting more people involved with the Center for Active Living and getting more people involved with pickleball. It also offers bathrooms to both.
Yes.
And I'm big proponent of bathrooms, if you haven't heard me over the last 13 years.
With respect to the sound study, was that a study of the impact of the noise of people hitting a pickleball?
It, it was. So through their, their software and expertise, they were able to project the noise from the 12 dedicated pickleball courts. They had a lot of findings. One of their findings is that it is audible at all receivers. But what they also found was that the levels are so low, and as you can see from, from that graph, that it was well below the most stringent standard criteria that, that we could find. In fact, the highest level was 13 decibels below that max level recommended by the Model Noise Ordinance for, for pickleball.
Got it.
Can I just add, Joe, the fact that we've had pickleball at Plymouth River now for probably three or four years, as well as here at Cronin. And we have had no complaints. And those are very close to residents. And this is why the feasibility study looked at locations across Hingham, looked at eight locations, and came up with the location that met the requirements. Thank you.
So you have pickleball aficionados here. I am not one.
Yeah.
But from what I've seen, there is new technology. They have the quiet pickleballs, which apparently are close to noiseless. And am I, am I correct that the sound study did not use the quiet balls for their analysis?
That's correct.
So that, to the extent that there was either a movement towards, or even a requirement to use those at these courts, the noise would be even less.
Correct.
So I'm taking this as, almost as a worst-case scenario. From what I've seen, and again, I don't claim to be an expert, the quiet pickleballs are being very well received. So that is another factor that may ultimately impact the, the sound that is, that is heard. I'd like to talk about the budget. I know you've got, you have the numbers. Can we just put them up on the screen so we know what the, what the dollar amounts are?
I don't, I don't have a slide-
Oh, we don't have that slide?
But I could, I could go over it one more time.
Yeah, because that, it's in our material. I just, it's the, it's where, how you came up with, with the dollar amount that's being asked, and there's various items here?
Yes, the, the total project cost-
Right.
Is, is $2,036,600.
So looking through it, I did not see the design and permitting costs isolated or even specified here. So for example, going to the Conservation Commission, delineating vernal pools, things like that, where are those costs in your, in your estimate?
It says it at the top, "All anticipated, anticipated costs include contractor general conditions, contingencies, and soft costs," which is the design fees. So it's factored into the bottom-line number.
But typically, you would actually see that number, so you would know what is appropriate for, for the design. What, you're gonna have to have an engineer. What, what's the cost associated with that? To say it's included in here doesn't give me a lot of comfort. It, it's something that was typically, in every project that I've seen, it's, it's shown. And here, it's not shown. So is there another chart where we can actually see those costs?
I could ask CHA to itemize that out, so it could clearly state the design fees.
Typically, when you're going for project reviews, something like this, there may be a requirement for a traffic study. Is that cost included here?
No, we did not factor in a traffic study.
And what about the, for a civil engineer to actually create the, the, the design that would ultimately be approved? My understanding is what you have is something that a landscape designer prepared, but not a civil engineer. So there would be those costs as well?
Yes, that's also in the bottom-line number, but I'll ask them to itemize those out for you as well.
Because there's, there are some, and we may hear from them later, that there, a suggestion is that you do this in phases, which is what we're doing with the Center for Active Living. You have the first phase, you actually design it and go through permitting, and then you come back for the cost. Here, it's combined, and it's difficult to distinguish what, what the cost of the first phase would, phase would be versus the second. And if I was on, on, on the committee, I would be saying, but what, what is the cost to actually move forward with the permitting agencies to get the engineering, to make sure that you can actually build the courts as designed? Because I understand there's a vernal pool issue that has not been factored in. Someone's got to study that. Where are those costs?
So I've met with Conservation Officer, and the, the consensus was the project is feasible. But certainly, go, like any project, going through Planning Board or Conservation, the project design could evolve. But I, I met with both Emily and Shannon Palmer, and the consensus was the project is, is feasible.
Is it feasible at 12 courts, or how many courts?
That's still to be determined as we get through Conservation and Planning, but with our preliminary design, we're not at a stage yet to go through those boards.
Just to answer, CHA has presented this as a design-construction project all-in-one. I mean, that may not be how we've done buildings, but for something of this nature, we're talking about a court. And we have done the environmental study. We have gotten quotes for the demolition. This is also going to require a demolition of a building. So this, and Mark can certainly get the itemized part, but this is a design-construction project. And we may not have done that before, but this is a court, not a building. So it is different.
But other courts, tennis courts in this community and other communities are typically done, first the design and then a construction. And here, it's combined. And so I'm, I'm just asking, why is that the case?
So for the high school tennis courts, the street hockey court, the basketball court would follow the process that we're on here. We did not get design, full-blown design money first. We got everything at one town meeting.
But were those new courts, or just simply replacing or improving existing facilities?
It was a brand-new court. There was an existing court there. That entire court got removed, and a brand-new court got placed in. Same with the Cronin basketball court, the street hockey court, the Hingham Community Playground.
Right. But this is where there are currently no courts. So this is fundamentally different.
But they did go through the same process. We went through planning, we went through conservation with those projects. We, we were, and it was designing, the same with the playground, all-in-one. We did it last year. So it was not just replacement. And we did go in front of the Planning Board and Conservation with the playground.
And you were doing that here as well?
Absolutely. This is, this is what CHA has done with the projects that we've gone through with them. So this is a similar project that we have worked on with them for now several years. And the process is to go with a design and construction, which is the least expensive for the town. To put it off and add another year to it, costs will continue to go up. The Hingham High School tennis court's a perfect example. We were able to get through that process, and even going through it with one year, the price went up. So we are very careful in this cost estimate to make sure that everything we have estimated here will be able to be accomplished. And one of the key ones was the demolition of the Tracers Building, which will be a huge advantage to not only the town, but the senior center.
So what have you estimated in terms of the remediation costs? In terms of the soil that has yet to be determined as to what, what the composition is? What's senior for, for those costs?
We know there's a huge factor, factor with demolishing the building that's there. We do have $200,000 built into the demo number to account for those costs.
If there's soil that needs to be remediated, which we don't yet know, I guess I'm, I'm not clear how you factored in the cost for aspects of the project of which we're unaware.
The cost, I mean, we can go back to CPC as when we originally went to CPC and had our first cost estimate for the demolition and remediation, we were talking at that point, $250,000. We went back, I will speak for Mark here, that went out to three different vendors to get what we considered very, and I want to go back just for a moment. After learning the pool going to learn what the demolition of the pool would be, and the seniors, Center for Active Living-
Center for Active Living.
I'm working on it. Center for Active Living, they also had done work on finding out what demolition of that building would be. We then went out to several vendors to make sure that we were accounting for every possibility so that, we went from $250 to $465. The money is in there. The good news is there may be some money going back to the town, and I can't guarantee that, but we do the best we can with recreation projects to make sure that we cover the costs.
Got it. Liz, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you for being here again, and for all of you being here and participating. I appreciate that there was a meeting held last Thursday night. I think that was an important part of the process for residents to have questions answered and have an additional forum to hear about the project and, and ask questions to, to our sound engineers. Certainly, this will, there's seven weeks till town meeting, and then this, if it passes at town meeting, would then go through the permitting processes to, to Joe's point. So there's many more opportunities, I think, for people to get involved and ask questions. And I know Joe asked about the, the pickleball balls, and I've, I've read about that too, the low-noise gear, as well as some additional surfaces that might absorb sound better than concrete. So I'm assuming those sorts of things will be contemplated during the design? Is that accurate?
We can certainly look at that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now. I think we obviously have people here that would like to, to speak, so I'd like to hear some of the feedback.
Yes. So Tom, anything you wanted to add before we-
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
So at this point, I'm prepared to accept questions from members of the public. But please remember, we are not sitting here as a permitting board. We are not the Planning Board. We're not the Conservation Commission. We are simply looking at this from a funding perspective. So with that, I will accept questions. Is there any, any member of the public with a comment or question? So if you do, please go to the mic and give us your name and address.
My name's Beth O'Connor, 233-
Into the mics, so people-
My name's Beth O'Connor, 233 Wapatake Road.
Thank you.
I think, I, this is a comment more than a question.
Sure.
With the active, how do you, what do we call it?
Center for Active Living.
Center for Active Living. And that is going to be at Bear Cove, seems like it, and the pickleball should be there. And to grow old gracefully, you need to be active. And pickleball is a great sport for everyone to play. And anyone here who hasn't played it, you should come out. It's a great community. Everybody's so nice, friendly, and at our age as seniors, you either use it or you lose it. So please help us keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
All right. Hi.
Hello.
My name is Hillary Tucko, and I live at 22 Hillside Terrace. I have been talking with a lot of Hingham folks lately about this pickleball project and still trying to play catch-up on understanding the need versus the want of the pickleball community, not all identified as Hingham Town residents, for a $2.036 million commercial-sized 12-court pickleball facility in Hingham, not just Carlson Fields. I hear the proposal that Hingham needs dedicated courts. And then I read the 90-page Athletic Field and Court Study that the Recreation Committee points to, and nowhere in the study does it mention to build new pickleball courts. Remember, the word pickleball is only mentioned five times in the entire 90-page report. There's no mention of pickleball in any of the appendixes of the report. So this sounds more like a want. The 90-page Field and Court Study mainly recommends to repair all of Hingham's current recreational facilities. Like Selectman Joe Fisher, you, you pointed out, as, for the, for the, the hockey, the hockey at Cronin Fields, was that a current facility that the-
Right.
-Rec Commission rebuilt? So fields, courts, parking pathways, access to fields, maintenance, et cetera. To my understanding of the report, there was no suggestion to build any new courts in Hingham. And I bring this up because the Rec Commission continues to point us to the Hingham Court and Rec, to the Hingham, the 2020 Hingham Court and Rec Athletic Study. The Hingham pickleball community currently has six courts at Cronin Fields and four to six courts at PRS. Therefore, Hingham provided the pickleball community designated space to play pickleball as recommended by the 2020 Hingham Athletic Court and Field Study, page 29. Convert three tennis courts to designated pickleball use. The pickleball community has been provided more courts than recommended by the study by providing additional courts at the PRS site. The pickleball need has been met and actually surpassed, according to the 2020 report. According to Global Pickleball Network online, Hingham, Massachusetts currently has 15 pickleball courts. I read in the CPC notes that the Recreation Commission identified 500 to 1,000 pickleball players. But I cannot find the study or the notes to back up how those individuals were identified. Are they all from Hingham? How did they, how did you identify those individuals? I do not recall receiving an email from the Rec Department or a survey in the mail. I hear the reason for new pickleball courts is to free up the tennis courts. But the Recreation Commission and the CPC cannot provide a court space utilization report supporting the need to build new courts, tennis or pickleball. I asked the Recreation Commission for a court utilization report during last Thursday's meeting and followed up with them this week and was told there is no such report. The 2020 Athletic Court and Field Study said Hingham has a surplus of court, tennis courts, on page 15, and recommends dedicating three tennis courts at Cronin Field to pickleball. I hear there is a need for pickleball courts because the tennis courts are packed, and the tennis players need the courts back. Again, I was told by the Recreation Commission they did not have a utilization report to support, they're running out of tennis court space. As many Hingham residents, I drive by the courts on any given time of day throughout the spring, summer, and fall and see empty courts. I touched base with some folks in the tennis community, and there were no complaints about court space, but there were complaints about the noise pickleball makes. I will reiterate what I said before. The commercial-sized 12-court pickleball project proposal in a quiet residential neighborhood at Carlson Fields has the potential of subjecting all abutters to 130,000 high-pitched tonal impulsive 106-decibel pops a day, seven days a week. To compare, the neighbors abutting Cronin Courts are subject to less than half of that with six shared courts and minor time restrictions. The Hingham community at large needs to be more informed- The Hingham community at large needs to be more informed that the soundscape at Carlson Fields will be forever changed for everyone, from people using the fields for dog walking, pickup games or casual enjoyment, to the museum and potential senior center, as well as being spectators for organized events. I read the email strand from the abutting neighborhoods of Cronin Fields, and they complained about the noise pickleball makes to the Rec Commission. The only town noise bylaw the Rec Commission could point to was related to construction time, which poses a problem for Hingham residents' right to peace and quiet. The Hingham Noise Ordinance requires an addendum to protect residents from long-term exposure specifically to the pickleball nuisance noise. Remember, construction projects have a limited time. Pickleball will be ongoing all day, every day, eight to 12 hours a day. The Assentec Sound Study and Sound Engineer, which thank you very much. It was very good. He was sound, and no pun intended. Like, the Assentec Sound Engineer, he was great answering our questions, and we appreciate that. The Assentec Sound Study and Sound Engineer concluded the neighbors are going to hear pickleball at all receptors, whether 50 feet away or 1,100 feet away from the courts. The Sound Engineer went on to say there's no guarantee with either sound mitigation option because audiology is not a settled science. The Sound Engineer also failed to address why Assentec did not include the same pickleball overview in the Hingham Report about pickleball noise as the Assentec Falmouth Study. Is this project worth gambling $2.036 million of the town's money with the potential of lawsuits when the Sound Study and Engineer concluded all abutters will hear pickleball at any point of the day and to close your windows, and audiology is not a settled science? Mind you, this is after the May 2024 CHA feasibility study that said both potential Carlson complex sites have no noise issues. The Recreation Commission's proposal highlights other communities in their presentation and their pickleball courts. Let's take Duxbury Courts, for example. The CPC presentation highlights they have nine courts. What it does not highlight is that the courts are in two separate locations. Three courts at Alden and six courts at Tarklin on Route 53. The six-court complex is next to a highway. In 2023, Duxbury CPC committed only $100,000 to convert the Alden tennis courts into three pickleball courts. And to my understanding, Friends of Duxbury Pickleball have to raise their own money to cover the maintenance costs and updates. Additionally, pickleball players must pay a yearly membership fee to play, 50 for residents and 60 for non-residents. The Hingham CPC is proposing to spend $758,000 of CPC funds in asking the Hingham Town residents for another $1.277 million in taxes to fund a commercial-sized pickleball facility in a residential neighborhood that is only going to serve 2.83% of Hingham Town population. This means the town will be spending $4,733.20 per unconfirmed Hingham resident pickleball player. Wow. This project is not ready for town meeting for many reasons. The 2020 Hingham Athletic Field and Court Study has not identified the need for new courts, tennis or pickleball. Proper sound mitigation solutions have not been tested, only theorized. Town bylaws and noise ordinances have not been created to protect residents from this specific pickleball nuisance noise and the proper project estimates. A letter with over 60 signatures from Hingham Town residents was sent to the Town Select Board requesting to stop and pause the pickleball project. This project started at $1.3 million in June of 2024 and is now over $2 million. This project has not been clearly outlined and is only going to get more expensive and cost Hingham residents more tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's, no, there's two competing hands over there.
Just a couple of points that I wanted.
Name and address, please.
Susan Wetzel, 239 High Street.
Thank you.
A couple of points I wanted to ask. One was with regards to, you said this would be built and there would be no additional cost to the town. But yet we hear there is ongoing maintenance for the cost of all fields and all courts. And I live on High Street, and I go by the Plymouth River School multiple times. I have six grandchildren. We walk down there, and I have to say that the courts aren't full. You know, this is dead summer. There's very little people there. So I found it amusing to think that we're going to put in 12 more courts somewhere else when that one is not used. On occasion, there are people there playing. So that's just 27 years of living near that court. I can honestly say it's not busy all the time. There's no, you know, there's no shortage. But the other thing that I wanted to say, the maintenance is an issue in this town. With our, we have a basketball court that's down there at Plymouth River School. It's in abysmal shape. And, you know, I take my kids down, my grandkids down there. I just think that the expense of the $2 million right now doesn't sound like enough research has been done. And I would like to propose that this be postponed until all people, all parties, particularly the abutters, have the opportunity to have their questions answered and that the maintenance of the fields that we have become the priority in this town because we pay enough taxes.
Thank you. Okay. Yes. You'll have a chance to speak. Okay, go ahead.
Hi. My name's Mary Ann Bryan, 75 Prospect Street. And I was here last time as well. And I did want to just make the point that we have zero pickleball courts in town. We have tennis courts that Park and Rec has done a great job of modifying so that we can learn the game. But you cannot properly play the game on a tennis court. The nets are too long, the nets are too high, and the courts are too big. So we have zero. And we're just asking to have a place that we can gather and have fun together and work together to get to know one another again. During COVID, many of us were playing outdoors because there was no place else to play, and we kind of got each other through. So I see this as a community space, much like the Hingham Skating Club way back when, that people gathered and families were there. And I just read, reread the anchor article when the skating club was demolished. My dad was one of the people who got the skating club going and operated it. He also was involved with the Bathing Beach. When I was growing up, the Bathing Beach was a place that we all went. This is going to be the same thing. I understand people are concerned. But all of the concerns have been, if they're listening, have really been mitigated through Park and Rec. This needs to go forward. We've been waiting a long time. It's a great project. It's for the entire community. And the issues really aren't there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that we refrain from clapping. It will not only take up the time, but I will stop taking comments if we keep getting those noises. So I'll accept the next comment right over there. I'm going around the room, as you can tell.
Hi.
Hi.
Kathy Kilcoin, USA Pickleball Ambassador from Waymouth. Do you need my street address for?
Sure, go ahead.
160 Carolyn Road, Waymouth. I just wanted to reinforce what Mary Ann said. It's a, pickleball is just a great community builder. And from Waymouth's point of view, you know, Hingham has done their due diligence. They have created a transparent process for being able to do this project. It's really a model. And so I'd just like to thank you all for doing that. I have some other little statistics, though, about who plays pickleball. And I'm going to have to put my glasses on real quickly. But a lot of times, we're thinking that it's just a senior set. But according to, my background has always been in recreation. I worked at collegiate universities. And, you know, I couldn't get kids to play pickleball at Trinity College or any of these different places. But one of the trade journals that I used to really use a lot is Athletic Business Magazine and Sports and Fitness Industry. And according to their stats for 2024, and I feel for you guys on the Rec Committee when you have a 2020 study because things have changed. Landscape has really changed a lot. So according to these industry journals, the biggest age group is the 25 to 34-year-olds that are playing pickleball. So whatever percentage you think you have of your population, you're not including them, I think, when you're calculating that. And that's at 2.3 million people across the country are playing. Under the age of 18, it's 1 million people. And this was, you know, stats that was, you know, in 2024. So in addition, within the state of Massachusetts, we have competitions at the high school level. Just recently, the state has started club sports. And we have a north, south, central, and western Massachusetts.
You know, my antenna went up a little bit. I'm concerned with 12 courts potentially. Again, talking about the design, that we don't really have a design. We don't know what the cost is going to be, what the additional funds are going to be for this town, that I think is extremely important, along with everything else that's happening in town with the transmission station, $110 million, and the senior center potentially at $34 million. Bathrooms, big issue. 48 players on 12 courts. There's a little entertainment area. There's going to be, you know, an over, you know, place picnic area. So my concern is, okay, so what's going to happen, you know, when there's 48 players? Right now, there's no bathrooms. That's not in the design plan. So is that something that they want to add, think about doing? The other biggest concern I have is because we live there, is that the infrastructure of Bear Cove Park does not sustain the number of cars during the summer when people are playing, you know, baseball. I can tell you, when we can't get out the back, people come up Adams Court the wrong way. It's a one-way street. They actually come up the wrong way during the summer just to get out because they don't want to wait in line. So I'm thinking, you know, as an abutter, and obviously people in my neighborhood and Hillside and all the neighborhoods that are affected around there, Fort Hill Street, I'm thinking, what happens when we have that Center for, you know, Active Living in that area? In addition to the pickleball, it seems like we're putting everything down that neck of the woods, and there's really just one way in to Bear Cove and one way out. So my concern would be for a traffic study, which we asked for back in November. And we haven't really had an answer to the traffic study in that area. And then what mitigation for Adams Court? You know, with that one-way road? I mean, what's going to be the design and the infrastructure? Is there going to be a civil engineer involved in redesigning that whole area of town? Because I do see during the summer, it's very difficult to get in and out of there. And I think with the addition of the pickleball courts and the Center for Active Living, it's only going to get worse. So those are the comments that I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Judy Kelly.
Oh. Here she is. Go ahead.
Hi. Judith Kelly, 19, Hobbit Lane. I'm up here because I want to speak for the senior citizens. I mean, the really senior citizens.
Oh, come on.
Those that are 80, and I am one, 80 and above, who are drowning in the debt that is coming because of all the changes that have been brought up. Majority of them are needed. I voted for foster school. I voted for the police station. All of those I've watched and listened over the years and know that those are necessary. But I am looking, just this year, we got an 18% increase in our light bill. And on top of that, coming down the road is the project that the light company is going to plan to put some kind of a station at the transfer station, which is going to be astronomical. It's coming on the people of Hingham. I don't think we can just look at one project now. I think we have to look for the future. And a lot of these, I'm a single individual. I only, I'm living on a fixed income, Social Security, as opposed to a lot of you people that are sitting out there. You've got two people, you've got two incomes, and you have unlimited future. But you mentioned that we give options in this town. But a lot of the people, 78 above, are not physically capable of taking care, taking advantage of those options that are there. They are physically unable to stand or to do whatever is required by the town to earn the money to take it off there. Just sitting here tonight, it got even more depressing when I found out about the cost of the public works down at the Rotary on there, something that I wasn't aware was also in the coming. I do believe of the importance of the senior citizen center. It's been, oh, 2013, we've been sitting and waiting and waiting as one project came after another. But what we voted on, or what will be voted on in town meeting for the cost is not the cost of the senior citizen. It is citizen, the senior center. It is only the cost for the design and the other. So next year, we're going to be hit with the major total probably cost of the senior center. So I just feel we are being squeezed out of our homes. And we've lived here, I've lived here 45 years. And I just, and I know most of the people that I've met at the senior center in various places, they have lived there 40, 45 years. And so I just think that it is time to limit our projects. Hingham has never limited the number of projects that it needs. It seems like whatever year we're in, we just dump everything in and just up the taxes. And I just think that maybe it's time to sit back and say, we can't do it. We cannot continue to put this burden on our senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Thank you. Ron Nodham, I live on Wilson Avenue in Waymouth.
What kind of Waymouth people here? What's going on?
Well, first of all, I'd say I'm jealous with the whole idea of the project that you guys have considered in doing. And, you know, all I can say, really, I don't want to repeat what other people have said. And, you know, all I can say, really, I don't want to repeat what other people have said. But, you know, I played at Plymouth River School. Those courts were in horrible condition. I mean, whether it's for tennis or whether it's for pickleball, they were in terrible condition. And they're not, and they're not appropriate for pickleball, either the size, the size, the surface, the nets. I mean, none of it is appropriate for pickleball. And, you know, I go over to Bearcove Park often. You know, if it snows, I go over to the Snowshoe, I'll go for walks, I'll take my bike over there. I mean, I can't think of another place, and whether it's been anywhere on the South Shore that I've been, that is more appropriate for something like this than Bearcove Park. I mean, I think the reality, at least, you know, from everything I've heard, and I've been in a number of the meetings, is it is a huge distance from the courts to the nearest resident. I mean, if I strain, I'm sure I can hear 1,000 feet away a ping of a pickleball, if that's what I wanted, try to focus my attention on. But, you know, I just really think that, this would be the last thing I could say, is it, you know, change is always something that nobody feels comfortable with, and this would be change. And I think along with change is fear, and it's fear of like, something's gonna be different, and how's it, it's gonna affect me. And I think that's perfectly reasonable. But I don't think that's a good enough reason to allow a small group of people to kill a project that has such wide-ranging benefits for, for the entire town. And, you know, that's it. Thank you. Thanks for letting me talk.
My name is Julianne Taylor. I live at 29 Hillside Terrace. I believe everybody should be--
If you could just speak a little--
Oh, sorry. I should be, I believe everybody should be exercising, and I think pickleball's a great thing. I really do. And I'm not against it. But the size of this project is, it's just way too big. And you also have, and there's a lot of factors. On paper, it looks like a fantastic spot. I mean, it's got space and this and that. But the problem is, on paper is different than reality. Alongside where you want to build these, it's all water. The animals all drink from there. I see the coyotes in the deer. I'm not a Nancy Nature person, but honestly, we all have to live together. So we're gonna, we're infringing on their habitat. They're not gonna be able to drink out of that water. You're tearing down a building that has asbestos in it. I've lived in this house for 60 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. You put in a DPW, and when you did that, we've got the ball fields, which was great. But when the DPW went in, the soil was all contaminated. That all had to be torn up. So you just keep adding up the cost. The building is asbestos. You know the ground underneath that's gotta have chemicals, and it was an ammunition depot. So now you're incurring more costs there. Then you have the traffic. Right now, on any given day, you have people going to Bearcove Park, which is, everyone uses it. You have all of the ball fields and basketball courts. And on any given day, when they're, all the sports are playing, there's not enough parking in the parking lot. So they're parking on both sides of the street. You have the DPW, the employees, their equipment. You have the light company equipment and their employees. You have Adams Court that wants, that has to use the road. And the traffic just to get out, right now, is ridiculous. Now, if the train gets out, pulls in, then you're in big trouble. You sit there forever. So now you want to throw in 12 pickleball courts. So now you're talking a minute, potentially, 48 more cars an hour. See, that's another 480 cars over a 10-hour period. And you put in for only 39 parking spaces, and if you have 48 people, where are the other nine cars gonna go? There's not enough parking there as it is. So I just don't understand, you have a, they put in, we catered to a small minority of people that wanted a skateboard park. Well, now the skateboard park, it was very busy. They built three more over in Weymouth, and I can count on one hand the number of people that are there. And what's left behind is all graffiti. It's disgusting. It's an eyesore. They broke signs and this and that. So when you say the pickleball is gonna bring the community together, all you're doing is bringing the pickleball community together. You're not bringing the other 99% of the people that live in the town. So, you know, I'm all for you guys exercising, and I'm all for you to do some, you know, play pickleball, but 12 courts is just, just ridiculous. It just doesn't warrant it. So I just hope you think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Liza O'Reilly, 19, Porter's Cove Road in Hingham. I play pickleball. I teach pickleball for the Hingham Rec Program. I just want to cover a couple of points of this. As Kathy had alluded to, the report on the courts was done in 2020. That is eons in the pickleball world. COVID has an explosion of time of people learning this game because it's easy to pick up. And there are so many people here who I see on a regular basis playing in other towns and not in Hingham, because, as was said, we don't have pickleball courts. Playing on a tennis court is not playing pickleball. And the town has lost six tennis courts. So overall, you know, we're losing recreation facilities. This is about restoring recreation facilities to a community and inviting others to enjoy something as well. As far as 12 courts, one of the benefits of 12 courts is that all different levels of play could happen at the same time. In other communities, such as in Braintree, there are eight courts, and at times, half the courts are used for advanced players, half the courts are used for intermediate players. There's no place for beginner players to then play. With 12 courts, there can be opportunities for organized play at the same time open play. So, but I also don't believe that it will be seven days a week, eight hours a day, of 48 people on those courts. But at the times when we want to have a variety of play, which is beneficial, and open play to drop in as part of the community of pickleball, of changing partners all the time, and not just staying on the same court and monopolizing time, which is what happens now on some of the tennis courts and at Plymouth River. As far as bathrooms are concerned, I will tell you that in Hull at the pickleball courts, the players chip in, and we got a porta potty. And it's cleaned and maintained, and so that is a way, and there's porta potties at the high school fields, there's porta potties in other places, that, and they're clean. And so that is an opportunity. But also then, when the Center for Active Living opens, I would help, hope, that our community would feel that it is appropriate to have a bathroom on the corner of the building so that anyone from using those recreation facilities could use that facility, and it's appropriate. Brookline's recreation program is set up that way near their recreation facilities. I've used it when I went to play pickleball in Braintree. There's a condemned building on this site. I was on the school committee. I unfortunately was on when we had, when it was condemned, and we had to move a program and pay rent in Weymouth for these students to be able to use it. Yes, it's an old building. Yes, I'm sure there are issues there. But I don't want that building, as a town resident, I don't want anything more happening to that building. So when this project, this site was originally decided, I was really happy that the town was going to solve an issue that has been lingering for several years. And so for me, this is a two-for-one of a site opportunity, that we can solve a problem and we can bring a lot of joy to all generations in town. And I believe if you look in this room, that many of the players here are older than me, and they can beat me, too. But then families can play multi-generational opportunities here. So I just think it's okay to do something nice in our town, and I believe from, I am personally waiting to see how the funding is going, but I believe that there are some funds available, this is a one-time cost, to pay for this and to bring joy and something new to our community that a lot of people have gotten involved in in the last short term of five to six years. And let's have some fun in Hingham. So thank you.
Who else? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Anne Slater, 10 Weathervein Court in Hingham. I started playing pickleball during COVID, too. I started in Braintree because they have a very robust community. Now Braintree is so full, they charge residents that don't live in Braintree to play there. And it's gotten so robust that it's really just available to Braintree residents. And so many of us have moved to Hull. Hull has four dedicated pickleball courts, and the talk at the end of the season last year was that Hull was going to charge for non-residents to pay. So it's something to think about, that we have to pay to play at other towns. And many of us do drive in the outdoor weathers. And it's really just, people don't tend to play pickleball in the middle at 2 o'clock in the afternoon in July. It's early in the morning and in the evening. It's not all day long. It's not gonna be used 10 hours a day. It's just my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Crean. I live at 10 Edgar Walker Court. I guess, I live in conservatory parks, so my perspective is from me talking to my neighbors. And I think from the beginning, many people have heard me talk. My conversations have never been about, "Kill it." It's, it's been, but I really do want to address the comment model process, because, you know, I've had to listen to all the meetings and go back through all the documents. Back in May, the two sites in Carlson, and again, I found out about it much later on. I really got involved in November. But in May, it said the two sites in Carlson, one, the closest neighbor was 400, the other was 700, no noise issues. And, and then, and then on October 8th, the final application that was submitted by REC, there's a section for stakeholders. And the stakeholders were everybody that wants to play pickleball in Hingham. So Noah Butters. So then it says, "Sound concerns in the application will be nonexistent." Sounds pretty strong to me. So then we start going to CPC meetings, and they are bragging about all the letters, that there's no issues here, sound isn't an issue. And it's brought up repeatedly in the CPC meetings. And I wonder if those people even knew that on November 3rd, and prior, thank goodness, somebody from another neighborhood requested the sound study, because there was zero mitigation at that time, because they had said, had represented, noise was nonexistent. And you know what? Me as a neighbor, the, you just mentioned the new mitigation. I'm prob, what my house is, again, I thought we were like 900, but then somebody told me today we're 1,100. The highest decibels on one end of it are at my house. This isn't an issue about how close you are. So it's topography, it's lots of other things. But, you know, and the other thing that really kind of bothered me is, through all the CPC meetings, REC boasted about how they involved pickleball community from the beginning. They never went to us. And the reason why is there's a bylaw in town that says if you're over 300 feet away, you don't need to do it. Now, my question would be, if there's no noise, I'd be singing from the rooftops. Everybody come in, there's no noise, we found the perfect place. Neighbors, we want to bring you in in May, and we'll talk about it, we're gonna get you comfortable. It's all great. So what happens with the noise study? You know, again, I was happy to get it because I was hoping it was gonna come back, hey, you're all set. What it comes back is, is that every locator is gonna hear noise. And again, it's very hard to read that study. But the things you can read is, well, you're lucky there's no lights. And by the way, if you don't want to hear the noise, you can close your windows. So that's a good solution. So during the process, you know, they went from $0 in mitigation, and I think with the new one, it's close to $200,000. What does that do for me if, if, you hear from all these consultants, it's not a settled science, this and that? What does it do for me that you spend $200,000 and I gotta close, I gotta close my windows, or any neighbors need to close windows? I mean, is that really a solution? So it's always been with our neighbors, is we're not against it, but you didn't consult this, you purposely didn't consult us. In November, at the beginning of that meeting, one person from REC said, "We'll look into it." By the end of the call, they said, "No, we're definitely gonna do it." I mean, even going into that meeting, I think they were hoping they weren't gonna have to spend the money on the sound study, and it's all on tape. And I would really challenge anybody to come up here and tell me this was a model process. All we want to do is, we want to be protected. And you say, well, try not, I mean, what about our mental health? What about our community? I don't want, I want you guys to have pickleball. I'm not against pickleball. I'm not gonna argue about what it costs. The town can figure that out. But you can't send an article that, that today, I got emailed a letter about a model pickleball thing. I mean, you guys are voting to send it to town meeting, and we're getting that today. I mean, it's, do you really think that you treated us neighborly, the Butters? I mean, it's ridiculous. Did anybody send a letter to all those people that said there's no issues? Oh, by the way, we didn't do a noise study at that time. We represented that it was nonexistent. But you know what? It came out. And then it's all like, well, you don't really have anything to worry about. And then one pickleball ambassador said, you know what? I have planes flying over my house. They actually compared that. Everybody has noise. Can you imagine that? You know, you know, nobody wants to hurt the pickleball community. We want you to be happy. But you don't hurt one community when you haven't involved another community, and we're trying to get to a mitigation that there is no sound. Because you know what? I hope we can get that, and you can have tournaments. I don't want to be saying, well, you can only use balls you don't want to use, you can only use rackets you don't want to use. You can't have tournaments. Do you think that brings me joy? No, I want you guys to include us, send it to the next town meeting, we all try to figure it out, and, and we go from there. And again, I'm only talking about one issue, sound. I know there's other issues. But I just, you know, it just, it just, I hear this stuff, and I had prepared remarks, and I just started taking these notes, because, I mean, the town's consultant told REC to, you could put that in there, because of the distance, just because of the distance. Google it. I'm getting, it's not just blanket that way. So I think there's a responsibility that you don't send something like this to town meeting that hasn't been vetted. Let the town decide whether they want to spend the money or not. That's not what I'm here tonight. I'm just saying you have a half-baked plan, you didn't include, you didn't even call stakeholders, you purposely lessed us out because you could, not because you did the right thing. Because, I mean, if we would be talking about pickleball, if they compare it in their things, and again, to the ambient noise of a library. I mean, I just don't even know how you can do that. And, you know, we scrambled to get a sound consultant, where, you know, there's different things with tonal. We can't get the doctor that does it, because you gotta book them out months ahead of time. So we're scrambling right now. And, and I want to find a solution that it can work for everybody, but do you know what? If you say to me, "Hey, Bill, we're sending it to town meeting," and you know what? If you don't like it, you close your windows. You know what? You've taken me from somebody that wants to try to work with you, to you know what? You don't even care about us, so now I want to just fight you. And I don't want to be that with neighbors. I mean, it's just not the way you treat people. This isn't a NIMBY, we just don't want it in our backyard. I mean, people were saying, well, you already hear the other noise. We love that noise. It's a defined period of time, it's over, it's not the repetitive clicking. I mean, it's a completely different animal. And I don't know all the answers. I don't know if our sound consultant, right? All I know is your sound consultant, we went from, it's nonexistent that every single person's gonna hear it, and if you don't like it, close your windows. That's where we are right now. So, you know-- So, uh, you know, I, I want to be neighborly, I want to be supportive of everybody, but this process couldn't have been done worse than it, than it could have been done. And I, I ask anybody that lives in another neighborhood that plays pickleball, if this had happened to you, the way they treated us and didn't include us, um, how would you have felt? So I, I, I just, I, that's all I ask. Do unto others as you would have done unto you. And I'm saying, you're not ready for prime time, delay it, let people try to figure it out. And, and if we come back here in a year and we haven't been able to figure it out, we've had the time and we can say they couldn't figure out the noise thing, we're going to let the town now decide because we know we can't find a solution. And we think it's reasonable for you to close your windows because we want to have it here. You know, take the time, do it right, but be respectful, be neighborly. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, thank you. Anita Ryan, 37 Baker Hill Drive. I want to talk about quickly, a lot of points have been made, I want to talk about noise. The town has a bylaw. That bylaw was passed at town meeting. And reading that bylaw, I don't understand how we can enforce that rule, that bylaw that has been, been adopted at town meeting and also at the same time allow this project to go forward because the two contradict each other. The noise control, Article 42, says, whereas excessive sound poses a serious hazard to the quality of life, and whereas the residents of the town of Hingham have a right to and should be insured an environment free of excessive sound that may degrade their quality of life. It is the policy of the town of Hingham to prevent excessive noise which adversely impacts their quality of life. Telling people that they need to go inside their house and close their windows, in my mind, adversely impacts their quality of life. And I'm very concerned of us sending a project to town meeting when at the same time it violates our bylaw. Our town noise bylaw was put in place years ago by town residents to protect, um, against excessive noise and noise disturbances. And the, the, the quality in this article is distance, it's not decibels. We recognized in the town of Hingham, we want noises contained, contained, so that somebody who lives 700 feet away does not hear the ping, ping, ping of pickleballs all day because they can sit out in their porch or their backyard, read a book, um, play with their children without being disturbed, without being told, no, you must go inside your house. The sound study that was conducted actually proves that this project violates our town noise bylaw because it's plainly audible beyond 100 feet. And because of that distance and being audible at that distance, it violates our noise bylaw. And that's the concern I have. It's one going to the rule of law. We have a bylaw, we said noise beyond 100 feet, not acceptable. The sound study here has demonstrated this repetitive noise will be audible at all points in the sound study. Now, I take a walk usually, there's a, there's a quiet walking path between Adams Court and Bear Cove, and it's along Beale Street and it goes through the forest. It's very unique because you can still see the old railway tracks from Wampatuck to, um, the shipyard. That walking path, uh, the closest place on the sound study was the Light Plant. Right now, when I walk, it's a very serene, enjoyable walk. It will no longer be a serene, enjoyable walk once these 12 pickleball courts are built. The last point I'll make is one of economics. The town right now has a work stream going for economic development, and I believe Art Robert may be in charge of that. And one of the questions that was asked in part of that economic development survey was, um, let's consider type of land uses to create economic development for our town. And one of the questions I have that was asked is, what are, choose five uses that you would prefer to see grow in South Hingham. The number two was, let's develop some indoor health and fitness. And it was pickleball. Pickleball courts, indoor pickleball courts, just like Norwell has. Norwell built 10 indoor pickleball courts, and I know many of you play there and some of you teach there. That is exactly what we should be focusing on, a win-win. Let's generate some revenue and let's protect, um, our environment from excessive noise and let's comply with our noise bylaw. Thank you.
Yes. One second. If you can just go up to the mic and identify yourselves, please.
Thank you, everybody. Matt Carpenter, 32 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, otherwise known as 3A.
Yes.
Um, I've lived here since 1998. Um, I don't think anybody is battling around how great pickleball is. I think we all agree, everybody's talked about it. Norwell didn't build those courts, I don't think. I think that's a private company, so that's an indoor company. If Hingham wants to build indoor courts, I'm the first one, let's do it. Because then we can play year-round. I will, I will put my own money down to do that. I think this is about, A, a study that was done on seven locations to put dedicated pickleball courts into a place that could be agreeable for everybody, understood. And I agree, and I really appreciate everyone's comments here. There's soccer, because I coached it. There's softball. I walk my dog, love these trails, right? There's a lot going on there. Anybody in Conservatory Park, you have woods, soccer fields, a parking lot, a skating that you guys say isn't used, but I, I go there all the time and I see people using it, and then across the street. So let's talk about that. You have hundreds of barriers there. So to say that sound is an issue, I take, um, really a lot of, I don't, I, I have a problem with that because we did the study and then we also have land that completely obliterates you from that. And you already have kids screaming and yelling. You're like, oh, I don't care, kids screaming and yelling is fine, it's great, but you're not going to hear the pickleball because it's going to be 500 feet from that across and these kids are going to be playing soccer, which you love that sound, so that's awesome. So we are bringing that, so that's great. Adams Court, you guys, I totally understand, you're on the other side of that. I know we built these beautiful baseball fields and all these other things over by Stop &amp; Shop, you know, so that those kids could play. So you're probably getting those sounds too. So, um, you know, my question is that what I've heard tonight is that it's not a yes, it's not a no, but it sounds like we should really move forward to the next step and talk about whatever this next step is, let's get to the next step. Nobody said it was going to be 12 courts, nobody said it was going to be 10, nobody said it was going to be eight. But what we did say is, we agree that pickleball is awesome and we love it. And there's one place that we did out of seven places that looked like the best and we spent a lot of money. And thank you very much, thank you guys, for the work you have done because it started at 2020, okay? And everybody knew about it. It sounds to me like we should get to the next step and move forward and look at, okay, let's keep going because this isn't a complete, today isn't a final decision. This is just the next step in a process that gives everybody due process to talk about the best way to do this. And I don't think anybody said 12 courts was mandated, but that's what was recommended. I commend you. So I play in another community and I also live in another community in New Hampshire where they put pickleball courts. Eight lighted everyone with two basketball courts and four tennis courts and a, a Leary Field in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, uh, where they play baseball till about 10 o'clock at night. And I'll tell you what, the community has never been happier. I understand that could be a problem here. I've never seen anything better in my life. My cousin lives five doors down and I sit on their porch and I don't go mad from that sound. So, um, I have personal experience, play the game, I love it. I think what I've heard here today is that we should move forward and keep exploring this, and I really appreciate everybody's comments and this whole thing.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else with something not covered yet? Oh, someone online. Melissa Robin?
Hi, everybody. This is Melissa, this is Melissa Robin, uh, remotely. Uh, I lived in Hingham for over 20 years and learned to play.
Melissa, if you could just give us your current, uh, address, that would be helpful.
Sure. Um, I currently live in Hull at 204 N Tasker Road. Um, and as I was saying, I lived in Hingham for over 20 years. Um, I learned to play at a Hingham Recreation Program eight years ago. And I was also, um, asked by the town at the time to be the point person for pickleball with Philip Hayman on the athletic court and field study that was done five years ago. Uh, that study did recommend dedicated courts. I know we've heard otherwise tonight. And at the time, the ask was nine courts and the consultant, Weston and Snow, said, you're not asking for enough, this sport is growing. And boy, were they right. So this, this sport appeals to everybody of all ages and we will see within a couple of years, I'm sure, that there will be a high school team because that's now exploding across Mass. I just wanted to reiterate two points that were made at previous meetings that I think are very important. And one was, um, Nancy McDonald, who lives in the White Colonial on High Road, right next to Plymouth Rivers, six courts. It was measured that her home office was 140 feet from the courts. She works in her home office with the windows open all day long, all year round, not the windows open, obviously, in the winter. She said and testified at a meeting that it was never an impact and there's no mature growth forests there. As you all know, it's a wide open grassed area, maybe a couple ornamental trees by her house. Her patio is 140 feet, she said, from the courts. And she sits out there all the time, relaxes. And again, she said, she is not bothered by this noise that, you know, everybody has, excuse me, that didn't really come out right. She said that the noise is not an impact to enjoying her, um, quality of life and living. So as Mark very astutely said just now, there are a number of activities on this site and homes that are 1,000 feet away or more are not going to hear these courts. And the REC board has already agreed to put in 15-foot sound barriers. There's nothing like that in the entire state in terms of a sound barrier system. When we hear about pickleball noise in the, in, um, the press, it's always after the fact. So yes, Hingham has had a very good process for five years. All the, all the meetings have been publicized, there's been articles in the paper, and there's always going to be some people that are surprised and said, I don't know about it. But there's been quite a lot, quite a public process of dozens of meetings and a lot of exploration and site visits of all the communities on the South Shore to see what others are doing. And we've done it better. We, we've created incredible buffers that don't exist. The Braintree Courts are like, you know, 80 feet from a home. Hull, they're on top of homes. But again, you know, the Hingham REC said that in all the years of having, um, all the pickleball activities at Cronin, they've had one phone call, one phone call. So again, I think we've heard tonight from a lot of people that have a lot of concerns. I can appreciate that. I'm a retired public planner, but there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people in this town that want this desperately. They've been patiently waiting, they're, they've learned years ago, and as everybody said tonight, they're going to other towns to play because they, they don't have any in their backyard. And that reminds me of decades ago when I had young kids, I was driving to other towns because we didn't have a playground. And then I remembered how we all put our efforts together and we built a beautiful playground at the time, um, right, you know, by town hall. And it was a gathering place for so many people to enjoy. And I think we need to do the same for the, the pickleball community, which is only going to grow and grow and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay. I think we've heard from lots of folks, and we've heard very impressive views, considered thoughts. And I think, um, people are respectful of each other. And I believe, um, there is unanimous view that pickleball is a sport that many enjoy and it'd be nice to have it here. What I've not heard is unanimous view about the location and the process. Um, and I think that's, that's what we need to consider. Liz, do you want to give us your thoughts?
Well, thank you for everyone's participation tonight. I wrote down all of the comments. It's actually a very balanced discussion, which is, is nice to see. And, um, so I appreciate all of the feedback. I have definitely been pushing for a public process. Um, I want people to feel informed and heard. Um, again, I'm very appreciative of the meeting that was held last week. I'm glad we had this forum tonight. Um, and this is not the last step. We, our vote does not make it happen. You, you don't get to vote tonight. I am comfortable moving forward knowing that there's a lot more steps to this process, um, including the permitting and the planning board. I mean, that's when we're really going to get into the specifics of what does it look like, how many trees, what is the fence, what is the noise mitigation? Um, so I do, I trust in that process. With all of that being said, we have a lot to consider. There's a lot of feedback tonight and it's almost 10 o'clock. So if you want to push to next week.
Yeah. I, I think, um, the comments that I heard this evening, um, I want to consider not just 10 minutes after I've heard them. And so, uh, out of respect for, I think, the time and effort that everyone here has put in, I want to take the additional time and effort to, to make a reasoned decision here. Um, so I am inclined, uh, to have a vote on this at our next meeting, which is just, it's next Tuesday. So that, uh, you know that we have taken this very seriously. And we, it's our intention to take action that's in the best interest of the town. So this has two implications. One, we have a vote on this Warren article, and then it is also part of the CPC application. So I think the specific, uh, part of the CPC dealing with the pickleball courts, we would also defer until next Tuesday as well. I believe what Liz said is critical, that it's important that we have a process where people have, have been heard, but that they also understand that they've been heard. And I believe we've gone through that. So I appreciate your time. Uh, we are, I'm not going to do a vote on this Warren article this evening. Yes, sir?
Will there be comments made at the next meeting or will it just be your vote?
So, um, the process, we, we're not going to have additional public comments. We, we've exhausted the process this evening and it's late. Uh, and now is the time for this board to, uh, consider and then to deliberate publicly and make a decision. So, thank you.
If you, I would say, if you have additional comments or something that we haven't heard tonight, feel free to email us and we'll consider that before Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do this every week, you're always welcome.
No, we can do the CPC. So we're just not, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda.
You can leave.
Okay. Right, that's right. Go play pickleballs.
Okay.
Okay. Nope, we're going to go, Julie, do not leave. We're going to now consider Article M, which is the Community Preservation Recommendations.
Well, how can we do that? The pickleball court.
We can exclude.
Okay, exclude, okay.
Okay. Julie, give us the rundown now that the, your audience has disappeared.
Julie, you matter too.
Okay. Julie Straley, 231 Lovett Street, and I'm Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. There's still folks on this, um, at this meeting, and I think that they are interested in the other projects for coming bef, um... other projects for coming, recommendations from the CPC. So anyway, I wanted to point out to you tonight that some new information since the last time we talked about the CPC article three weeks ago. And this has to do with the Old Ordinary Campus Improvements Project. And so after the CPC article was drafted and became part of the warrant, an issue came up about the preservation restriction for the Old Ordinary property. So Town Council has drafted a recommended motion, which the Advisory Committee will take up for part, for the Old Ordinary part of the CPC article. So the language I had just put on the slide so you understand it, so it's appropriating the same amount of money, $600,000, but part of that appropriation would be to authorize the Town of Hingham Historical Commission with the approval of the Select Board to acquire a preservation restriction for this project under the provisions of Mass. General Law. So why this change of language? Why a preservation restriction? Under the Community Preservation Act, many towns, including Hingham, require a preservation restriction when any amount of Community Preservation Act funds are awarded for rehabilitation or restoration of an historic property. This protects the town's interests should the property change hands or became subject to additional development pressures. So local historical commissions are empowered to hold preservation restrictions under the State's Historic District Act. So there's currently a preservation restriction in place at the Old Ordinary, which is why the Hingham Historical Society came before you several months ago. When they started doing the campus improvement project, they needed your permission to do that, and they were using those funds from the Massachusetts Office of Tourism, Travel and Tourism. At Annual Town Meeting in 2003, the very first year CPA grants were awarded in Hingham. The Old Ordinary was one of the first projects. And that was for $14,600 to repair the foundation and regrade and install drains around that property. So a preservation restriction was created, but it was sort of old language that, the language has been improved over time in a preservation restriction. And what is in place right now is maybe a little too restrictive. And so it was just the advice of John Coughlin to recraft the preservation agreement using today's standards of language. So Town Meeting, if it approves the Old Ordinary Campus Improvements Project, part of that recommended motion would be to also rewrite or create a new preservation restriction for this property. So it's just sort of correcting something.
So we, we have item number four on Article M, which deals with the $600,000 from the CPC General Fund for Historic Resource, Historic Resources Purposes to be Used by the Hingham Historical Society for the Old Ordinary Campus Improvements Projects.
Yep.
So is this the new language that John Coughlin is recommending?
No, that in addition to it, so this is tricky, because this is what the Advisory Committee will vote on, the Red, because they do the actual recommended motion in an article, is that their language would include this authorizing the Town of Hingham Historical Commission to create the preservation, to acquire preservation restriction.
Do we have that right, Chair?
So I'm just like, giving you that information just so you know about it.
Yeah, Sean's online. She's not proposing a change by you. She suggested.
Yeah, Joe, we're not, we're not proposing a change in the warrant article. We just want to clarify with AdCom that when they draft the motion.
What their vote, got it, okay.
Yeah, we're looking for this in the motion when it gets to AdCom, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't need the approval of the Select Board.
Well, that, the approval of the Select Board would be when the preservation restriction agreement is granted, so that'll come another day. That's after they get the funds, the project, there'll be a preservation restriction coming back to you.
Got it, so.
Just for transparency's sake.
Got it.
So you know.
Okay.
That's what's going to transpire.
That's what's going to transpire at AdCom, and that is not reflected in our vote on Article M. Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. So what we have in Article M is the $40,000 for CPC to use for administrative and operating expenses, the $209,179 for the payment of bonds, the $700,000 to be used for the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, the $600,000 for Historic Resource, for the, that's what we're talking about now, for the Hingham Historical Society for the Old Ordinary, the 758, number five, which is a $758,640 for the pickleball projects, project. And then the final one, which is the, the funds from the sale of 18K Bear Cove, Beale Cove Road and 21B Beale Cove Road.
Correct.
So those are the items. And given the discussion we had this evening, I'm going to entertain a motion to, for favorable action on Article M, holding back item number five pending our, our vote next Tuesday.
So moved.
Any, any, is there a second?
Do you want to ask for?
I can ask for comment.
Okay, second.
Okay, moved to second, is there any public comment on the CPC recommendations? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, it's approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
So what else have we not covered? I don't believe we're doing any, I think we've handled all of the warrant articles. I don't believe we have appointments for this evening, Bill?
None.
Liz?
None.
Okay. Public comment on items not on the agenda? Any members of the public with comments? Seeing none, we move to Town Administrator, Administrator Select Board Reports. Art is not.
He's not, well, he's, he is at home.
Okay, Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
And nothing for me.
No licenses that were liquor licenses?
I don't think there was one, no. None.
Great, Liz?
Since it's so late, I'm just going to make a really brief comment. I had the pleasure of attending the Hingham Civic Association meeting this week. Deirdre Anderson hosted at the Heritage Museum along with Warren Pelissier and Katie Sutton. And if you're not familiar, I encourage you to look it up. They have a website, a calendar of town events going on, and fabulous, fabulous group of nonprofits and community leaders, so thank you.
Bill?
Just briefly too, Tom and I, as well as Jack Manning, Russ, Russ and Lisa Campbell had a first round of interviews with the DPW superintendent today. It went very well, we have some great, great applicants, we're going to do round two next week, but I'm happy to report that we're moving along with that process.
Great. And I started off this meeting this evening with a sad note, talking about anti-Semitic activity in, in Hingham. I will say that it's really small, and that we need to keep it that way. And I really appreciate the support of the community, of the Hingham Hall religious leaders, in making sure that there's attention focused where it needs to be, and that Hingham remains a community that is welcoming. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.